Meeting of the City Council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. You are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak. Technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the City Council, and a quorum is present. The meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. Tonight, we have with us Board One Councillor Scott Memmott, Board Three Councillor Marjorie Grace, Councillor at Large Jason Groh, Board Five Councillor and Councillor Vice President Sean Nolan, and I'm Tony Gross, the Council President. Next to me is Grace Poirier, our City Clerk. We have Kenny Costa, our City Auditor Online, Connor McCorkle, our CFO, sorry, online, and Brian Lloyd from our IT Department is also with us. And we will now have a flag salute and a moment of silence led by Councillor Nolan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence tonight for Captain Andrew Porter, who was a firefighter in Rockport, who died very young, the age of 43 yesterday, and a Boston resident. Someone that always responded to multiple calls in Gloucester as a firefighter. He was a person that would intervene when he saw something wrong, very quiet and understanding, and one of the most heartfelt people I have ever met in my entire life. And there was a picture that stands a thousand moments. That was what happened to Andrew Porter, this young Rockport fireman, standing in front of a four alarm blaze at Magnolia in the Magnolia Tony's Pizzeria or Vieira Pharmacy. Both of those men are gone at a young age, and we need to take precious life and enjoy each other as we can. And I want to thank them both for their services.
Next, we shall have oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the city's business to appear before the council. Make their statement without debate, and the City Council will refer matters to the Office of the Mayor. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. Is there anyone?
Just me, sir.
I mean, don't you dare. Name and address, for the record, please.
Joel Favazza, 28 Middle Street. I know I'm probably preaching to the choir here, but as you guys are well aware, Gloucester is in the midst of a housing crisis. I just want to point out a few things. In 2017, we had a housing production plan that said by 2022, we needed to add over 600 units of housing to avoid a housing crisis. In those five years, we permitted, I think, fewer than 300, of which 220 or so was halyard. So other than halyard, we did just over 10% of the amount of growth in housing units we needed from 2017 to 2022. And the state is now projecting that for the next 10 years, the City of Gloucester, along with other communities in the area, need to add approximately 120 units on average per year for the next 10 years to keep up with the demand. And so these are big numbers, and they require big steps. I don't think you can small step your way out of this big problem. And I just want to point out that when the CPA money was being last allotted a few weeks ago, you know, you had the Gloucester Stage Company come in, they wanted 140 grand to help fix their theater. They, again, nothing on this Gloucester Stage, but they are a nonprofit business who has sponsorship, membership, et cetera. You funded them at a rate of 70%, and gave them $100,000. Hammond Castle, another great organization, but an organization that is, you know, sells admissions, sells memberships, sells sponsorships. They asked for $200,000 for organ repair and tower repair. You funded them at 50% for $100,000. The Affordable Housing Trust, the entity that the city has to create affordable housing, asked for $350,000 to create affordable housing, and you funded their request at 30% or just under 30% for $100,000. And so to ask that, you know, in everything you do, keep in mind this huge problem we're facing, and again, small incremental 100 grand here to the Affordable Housing Trust is not going to get us out of there. And I'm not here with the magic bullet, the magic solution, but I just want to put it back in the radar that we need some big moves to move us in the right direction on this big problem. And I thank you for the work you've done. I thank you for the work you will do. Have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else in the auditorium?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
This is Brenda Malo.
Go ahead, Brenda.
43 Rocky Neck Ave. Thank you all for the work that you do. I appreciate it, and it matters. I would like to know why our mayor got involved with a recent vote by the Historic Commission as far as the preservation awards that were being given out. There was a situation recently, and I'd like to know the identity of the person who contacted the mayor with a fabricated lie stating that there was a $20,000 fine from CONCOM for wetlands violation on a property on Watson Street on Rocky Neck that was being nominated for a preservation award. The mayor approached the Historic Commission at the behest of this person who came to the mayor with a blatant lie. In fact, there was never any action or fine from CONCOM for this historic property that was just renovated at 12 Watson Street. It affected the City Commission on the vote on this matter. They had to have a special meeting to apologize once finding out the facts. And I just want to state that I find it reprehensible that a longstanding member of a Gloucester Board and a longstanding, longtime volunteer who curries favor with politicians at the local and state level would wield such power and viewed so respectfully that their lie would be received and that there should be repercussions for the person who perpetuated this lie. It was a blatantly self-serving malicious lie intended to cause harm to this person's neighbor that they're in a dispute with. And as I stated at the Historic Commission meeting last week, the person who told the mayor this lie should be identified. It should be placed in the public record because such behavior is reprehensible, especially by somebody who's on a Gloucester Board and seen in a wonderful light, and it's very obvious through this blatant lie, this person contacted the mayor, they contacted somebody on the Historic Commission, and they were pulling their political strings to influence a vote on a preservation award, and it's disgusting. Thank you.
Hello?
Okay, Mary Ann, name and address.
Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Mount Pleasant Avenue. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the company that has been doing the demolition work in regards to the East Gloucester Elementary School. They're so far beyond professional and accommodating to all of the neighbors. It has been a flawless, absolutely flawless project, as much as we hated to see the school go. This company has just been incredible. They've accommodated all the neighbors' needs. They're clean, they're efficient, along with J.G. Curley, he's been great. Mike Hale has been fantastic, and I just want to recognize all of them for an incredibly difficult job that they made pretty easy for the neighbors and the people surrounding streets. I really want to thank them, and it looks like the land is just about ready to be hydroceded. And I hope and pray that your council and other members of the city support the park and playground that hopefully will be erected soon. So thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no more dispense for oral communications, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Presentations. It's the Bunker Hill reenactment presentation by Eric Chetwind, Jonathan Lane, Annie Harris, and Ringo Tar.
You guys are up. You'll have to speak into the microphone so that it gets recorded well.
Very good. Well, first of all, thank you for having us. We have a whole crew here from Gloucester. We want to give you an update, excuse me, on the upcoming event for the 250th of the Battle of Bunker Hill, which is going to be held at Fort Stage Park. We are supported in this by multiple organizations, including Maritime Gloucester, Essex National Heritage, our own Mr. Ringo Tar, who's our local boots-on-the-ground, and Revolution 250, which is a statewide organization. Just kind of a reminder for anybody who hasn't seen this, the 250th commemoration of the Battle of Bunker Hill is essentially a reenactment of the Battle of Bunker Hill, where we're going to bring reenactors, and they're planning to come here from across the country and present at Fort Stage Park on June 21st and 22nd, excuse me. As I think many of you know from history, Battle of Bunker Hill is one of the most important events, certainly in the American Revolution, and particularly here in New England. This will be the largest celebration in the New England area for the 250th of the American Bunker Hill, we often get asked, why Gloucester? As I think everyone knows from their history, Battle of Bunker Hill clearly didn't happen here in Gloucester. But we did try and look at Charlestown, and this is actually being done in conjunction with the activities in Charlestown. For the level of activity that we're proposing here and planning on for about three weeks from now, really, Fort Stage Park is an ideal situation. It represents a lot of the land that actually would have existed in Charlestown during the American Revolution in 1775, primarily, obviously, a large hill, which we would all know from the Battle of Bunker Hill, and then, of course, water, right, which the Royal Navy played a significant part in the activities of that particular event. And so we'll be able to represent that here at Fort Stage Park. So therefore, we're bringing folks here. Another key point is, many of the men who actually served on the Patriot side during the Battle of Bunker Hill came from Essex County, came from this region. So when the Siege of Boston occurred after Lexington and Concord, the men of Essex County and sort of north of Boston formed up around Cambridge. Those are the men who actually served at Bunker Hill, while the southern Massachusetts men actually served in Roxbury, so they were not present at that event. There were a number of casualties here from the Essex area, so this is a significant event for the area. As part of the event, we will actually be putting out signs across the town, which actually commemorate individuals who served either in the battle or civilians who participated, because that is another part of the story we're going to share during the weekend. So you'll see more of that coming out in the coming weeks. We'll jump one more. So let me talk a little bit about the program. The program is a two-day program. We will be running Saturday and Sunday. It's the same program essentially both days, so it really gives folks from the town a chance, if you can't make it one day, you don't miss anything on the second day, as well as those who are coming in from outside the town. The event will basically commemorate or tell the story of the key events that happened on that day. One, the building of the redoubt, which is the famous story we all know about, in 1775, the British wake up in the morning, and they see Americans who have dug a large redoubt on a hill, which overlooks Boston and threatens Boston because they can fire artillery now into Boston, and Boston cannot reply. So we will be representing that part of the activity. It'll be interpreted, so the public can come in and ask questions, and we can talk about the story. We will also represent at the same time the landing, which is essentially, once the British uncovered the fact that the redoubt was being built, they sent ships across from Boston, because Boston was also a peninsula, so the only way to get across was to actually cross the harbor. They crossed the harbor and landed in what will now be Fort Stage Park, so we will recreate that. As part of that recreation, we're actually using local vessels, the Ardell, the Isabella, the Story will actually be participating in those activities and acting as the Royal Navy, along with many small boats that will actually be bringing British soldier reenactors over across the beaches. So the landing will actually be at Half Moon Beach in the park. So that'll be another part of the story we can share with the public. In the afternoon, we will represent the battles. Essentially, the British kind of coalesced, got all their troops together, and then started attacking the Americans, the first of which is a large flank attack, very famous with New Hampshire men under Colonel Stark, who repulsed the light infantry and grenadiers of the British columns along the beach, driving them back and really destroying the elite of the British forces. The second part are the massive waves that we probably all see in history books, many British soldiers going up the hill and the Americans firing down on them. We will represent those historical facts, along with all the historical people who were part of that. That will all be presented to the public as a large, grand spectacle kind of event, along with interpretation, narration, et cetera, so everybody can follow the story. So those will represent the main activities. We will, again, like I said, we'll do them on Saturday, and then we'll also do them on Sunday. In addition, we will be representing civilians who would have lived throughout the siege. So while the Battle of Bunker Hill was happening, Boston was actually under siege by British forces, and so we will represent and tell the story of the civilians who had to actually live under that siege. And they'll be sharing multiple experiences all throughout the day. This is a kind of a high-level overview of the schedule. I will say, we do have a website up with all the details, so I won't go into great detail here, but essentially, it kind of gives you an idea that we're repeating the activities each day. In the mornings, we will have the landing and the redoubt building, and in the afternoons each day, we will have the attacks on the redoubt and the attack on the flank. So again, multiple opportunities for the public to come and participate and learn the story of this key event in American history. In addition to the grand spectacle, we will have first-person interpreters who will interpret key people like General Gage or William Prescott, for example, so people can come up and meet and greet, kind of the heroes and maybe villains, depending on which side you represent, of the Battle of Bunker Hill, and learn again on that firsthand account, as well as those civilian interpreters, who will, many of them will be kind of one-on-one conversations about the activities that they're doing. So again, lots of opportunities for folks to interact, ask questions, learn more, wander throughout the site. We also expect and certainly hope that we will be bringing in significant numbers of visitors as well. We know from recent events, such as Lexington and Concord, which we also helped organize, Lexington had 25,000 visitors on their one-day event. Obviously, it is Lexington, and it's a little bit different, but we do expect large numbers of folks to come visit Gloucester and hopefully, because we've been promoting significantly through our marketing efforts, visit all the stores and shops and businesses here in town as well. This will give you just a quick overview of how we plan on leveraging the park during the activities. So what you can see here is, in the lower left-hand side, it says regulars and provincial camp. We have about 900 reenactors coming from across the country. They will be camping at the park over the weekend. They will set up military encampments, and that will be represented in the area that you see down in the lower left of the park. In the upper right, it says life in Boston. That's where we will run our civilian activities, so there will be civilian interpretation happening there, multiple stations for folks to interact with. And then the red areas are essentially where the battle activities will happen, right? So we're going to do the Battle of Breeze Hill. You can see there, if you've been in the park, up by the gazebo. And then we're going to do the landings, actually leaving from Cressy Beach and landing on Half Moon Beach, and then you can see an indication of where the flank attack will be. So there's designated visitor, you know, viewing areas for all these. Again, we've broken them up, so it's not just one long set of activities, but again, multiple opportunities for people to come up and engage, move from thing to thing, and not miss out on anything. Just talking a little bit about how we're planning to set up gives you an idea of what camps look like and some of the activities that we're doing to actually build the redoubt. They'll be cooking onsite by the folks who camp over in these cooking fireboxes, et And so we're, again, we're very excited to be able to have this event here in Gloucester. Certainly appreciate all the support we've received from local organizations, as well as the city, and hope that this is a landmark event for all of you, because we certainly think it will be. That will take, if there are any questions?
Councillor Memmott? Do you have any questions? Councillor Worthley?
Just a few quick questions first. Thank you very much, Eric.
Sure.
Annie, we've worked together years ago in Salem, Ringo, and it was Jonathan. Oh, sorry, Mike from the Center. I think it's an honor for us to be able to host this. I think everyone is very grateful for the work you're doing, and it really does celebrate our maritime heritage here in Gloucester. Even though the battle didn't happen here, I think this is a great opportunity for our city to be a host for this event, so I'm thrilled. I do have a few questions that are only designed to be helpful and not critical in any ways. I wonder, being the 250th anniversary, we expect that there'd probably be more people coming than have come in prior years. Do we have any busing plans to get people from other places? Because if all the activity, including the parking, happens at Stage Fort Park, it could get jammed up pretty well there.
We do. Do you want to speak to that, Ringo? Pretty detailed plan, so.
So we have two sets of parking. One is for the reenactors to park, because all the cars are going to come from there and all around the country. We're using the Manchester High School and the elementary schools parking for most of those. We have the soccer field, Magnolia Woods, West Parish School, O'Malley School, High School, Conlon Road, which will hold 1,000 cars for parking, some, obviously, Stage Fort Park and the Little Lake Field. And we have a couple of smaller lots. Saunalite is off of Dale Lots, as many cars as we can get in there also. And then we have buses at each station transporting the people to the park. And then the train, the trains are going to be running, and there's a lot of people we know are coming in by train, and we have a bus there to transport the people to the park also.
That's helpful, thank you. Obviously, I don't know if there's an arrangement with the mayor that, are people paying to park at Stage Fort Park?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The other lots are all free, but they are paying for Stage Fort Park.
Okay, so that'll be, this is June 21st, I think you said?
Yes.
Typically, it won't be that busy yet compared to beach parking, but there might be a lot of parking and potentially a lot of revenue for the city.
Oh, definitely will be.
Thank you for that.
We're planning on using the orchard and fitting every cow we can in there.
Just a couple of last questions. Are there any costs to the city that we need to be aware of in terms of helping with?
Yes, the DBW has given me a price for their participation in it, and we are accepting that, you know, payment. And it's pretty much, they set a max of $5,000, and that's just, we're moving down on the ball field, we have to move the bleachers and a couple of benches, and just general things that they'll be doing.
There weren't bleachers 250 years ago?
No.
But those $5,000 costs, you said you're covering that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was really asking to see if we had any expenses we had anticipated, but that's helpful.
No.
Two last questions, if I may, Mr. President?
Yes. Oh, yeah, and then the other, excuse me, the other thing is the Police and Fire Department, which we're covering the cost. Devon Details up there.
There's no cost to the city for us?
No cost to the city.
Thank you very much for that.
That was the aim.
I appreciate what they're, I think you said the phrase, Eric, people will have a chance to hear, or the actors will tell the story. Is there a place? I know that there'll be actors coming and going and interactions, but is there a place people will be sitting and listening or watching the whole operation at some point, the performance?
Yeah, so there's, I would say, multiple spots. So for the grand, the big spectacles, right, we do have designated spots. We're going to be putting out maps. We have it up on the website now, but we'll be doing handouts at the gates as well, so folks will know where they can stand to get the best view. In addition, for sort of meeting the historical characters, we'll actually be doing that up by the gazebo, and there'll be a schedule, so, you know, so-and-so will be here if you want to come meet them at this time. And then the civilians, again, another one where it's a designated area.
Great. Are you charging tickets for residents to see this, or is it completely available to the public at no cost?
We are not charging the public.
Okay, that's good to know. In the past, when there's been any sort of cannon fire, we have heard from some residents who are alarmed by that and pets who are disturbed by that. Is there going to be any, and can we at least notify people in advance of those things?
Michael DeCosta from Maritime Gloucester, hi. Yes, actually, we've reached out to the city already. We're going to do robocalls the Friday before the Saturday to let people know about the following day's events and the time when they should most likely hear marine signaling devices and cannons.
It's a good code word.
That was about three of a couple.
There will be, there will be some, sorry. Most of the louder cannon fire will be just concentrated at time in the morning, but there will be some obviously skirmishes throughout the day.
Thank you. And my last question, is there something that we can do to be helpful to your organization and to this operation?
I think just get, Annie Harris with Essex Heritage, and we've just been helping this whole group, I think just get the word out and get people excited. We think it's going to be quite an event, and want to make sure that everybody knows they're welcome to come. And we have, for the City Council, you'll be very soon getting a little invitation to come to sort of a welcoming breakfast at 7:30 to 9:00 on that Saturday. We have the British consul coming up, and I think the mayor is going to be shooting one of the cannons or lighting one of them, and the council's going to do another one. So I think it's a really neat event. I also just want to add, we're also installing a pretty robust sound system, so for some of the larger scenes, there'll be narration during that as well. So it's both a really kind of a celebration, but also really a sort of a very educational event for a very significant piece of history.
I just want to say thank you, as one councillor, for your bringing this to Gloucester. Appreciate it.
Well, we just think it's a great location. When the group was looking for a place to do it, my staff, we do, we work with a number of people up here in Gloucester, a number of organizations, we said, well, I mean, Stage Fort Park really meets the bill in so many ways. It resembles what Charlestown used to look like.
Looking forward to it, thank you.
That's a grace. I don't have any questions. Jeff pretty much covered all bases, thank you. But no, I think it's amazing, and I'm sorry that I won't be here that weekend. My daughter's bridal shower in New Jersey, but for that, I would be there. I would volunteer to be one of the actors, because I think it sounds like such fun. So thank you so very much for doing this. I think it's going to be an amazing event for the city.
So, Groh?
Will it be historically accurate breakfast?
You'll have to come and find out.
Okay. I have nothing, I'm assuming there's going to be no live fire during the battle scenes. I mean, it's the 250th anniversary, so it seems...
There's no live, it's blanks.
I'm really excited by this. I hope that at the end of this weekend, you'll decide that you never have to go back to Charlestown again, and you can just do this year annually.
Thank you for bringing it in.
Councillor Nolan?
So I've been talking to Ringo for all this for a long time, and it's a great opportunity for Gloucester and also for Massa- for Gloucester and also for Massachusetts. It does resemble Charlestown back in the day. It is my ward that this is happening in, and I've only fielded two complaints, and there's nothing we can do about those complaints. People have bought a house next to a park, and these are things that are going to happen in a park in Gloucester, and this is great for Gloucester. You guys have put out a lot of information. It's going to be a great time. I think that the majority of people are going to enjoy it. Your parking plan has been wonderful. I'm going to lose parking on Saturday at my business because of this, but I'll accept that. And I think that, I do have one other person that called me up, and their dog is afraid of fireworks, and they live at the park. They have arranged to have their dog go to their mother-in-law's house. She's a history teacher for the city of Beverly, and she can't be more excited about this. She's invited friends to have a party at her house for the weekend, and I think it's going to be great. And since you guys are some history buffs, long live Joseph Warren.
Well said.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, they had bleachers in the Coliseum, so.
Sure, good point.
But I think this is great. We do need to get the word out to pet owners, because it can be, I had a dog that was afraid of thunder and fireworks, and it can be quite traumatic for them and the owner. So if they, you know, really need to make some arrangements, hopefully, they'll be able to make some arrangements to, for the dog during the day, because it'll be all quiet at night. I assume the big cannons will be also roaring, at least the one big cannon?
Yeah, that's going to kick off the whole event.
Is that the only time it's going to be fired?
Yeah, that's just in the morning.
Okay, so the others, so the...
The others are even smaller.
The cannons on the boats are the other cannons that are going to be firing?
Yeah, so there are cannons on the vessels, and then there are field cannons that will be part of the battles.
Oh, there will be field cannons?
There will be field cannons.
So they're bigger than the starter cannons that the boat will have, boats will have?
Bigger than a starter cannon, but not as big as the big one out on the fort.
Okay.
Just mentioned, the privateer Lynx will be here as well, and she has a much bigger cannon as well that will be fired, but that'll mainly be in the morning, as I said.
Is the privateer from?
Nantucket. I mean, that's where she's out of now, but she's coming through and couldn't pass up the opportunity to be part of this. There's a lot of marine community that is going up for Windjammer Days, and they would like to be part of this, but we're trying to be very, as period accurate as we can be. There's, the Ardella's playing the part of the HMS Lively, and doesn't really look like the HMS Lively, so doing what we can.
Yeah. Yep. And will there be tours around on Maritime Gloucester?
We're going to try to keep most of the focus. Obviously, you can always come to Maritime Gloucester for a wonderful tour, but getting aboard the vessels, being able to watch from the harbor side, and seeing the landing directly from the vessels. Buy tickets. Volunteering is needed. Contact Ringo for volunteering. We have a lot of opportunities for people to experience this history live in a variety of different ways. You could put up a whole itinerary on Saturday and do something completely different with a bunch of different viewpoints on Sunday, so make a week out of it. It's history coming alive.
The crews on the vessels, will they be crewed by reenactors, or are you going to be seeking volunteers who will then become reenactors?
Some reenactors will be aboard the vessels. Most of the reenactors who are coming from all over the world, and these people have put their life both on hold for the next couple of months around the 250th, but the average person's kit is $2,000 to $3,000 just to be able to sleep overnight in a park. And they are doing just such a great job. We want them to be part of, as much as they can, be part of the reenactment itself, but there will be opportunities, as Eric said, throughout the day for you to get a live conversation with the reenactor.
Now, the crews on the boat, you said there's going to be volunteers also on the boats, or no?
No, the crews will be on the boats. Volunteers will have for land-based, yes.
Okay, so it'll be all, it'll be all reenactors on the boats in period?
All boat crew and reenactors on the boats, yes.
Oh, will the boat crews be also kitted out?
Can buy a ticket if you'd like.
Oh.
Yeah.
So you're selling tickets on the boats?
Selling tickets for the boats, yes.
And do you have to come in costume?
No, you do not have to.
Why not?
Because we wouldn't force anyone to buy a British costume.
We could have a pop-up costume shop.
We were going to have, someone mentioned breakfast, we were going to have a continental breakfast, but we realized that it was a British ship, so we couldn't do that. Sorry. It'll be English tea.
It'll be kippers and...
And scones.
All right. All right, well, well, oh, what's the cost of the ticket? Okay. All right. And you guys will be sending us a packet?
I just want to add one more thing. Sunday of this event, St. John's Church is putting on a prayer service with period-correct prayer books and everything to see what it was like back then. They've offered to do that service.
I'm not quite sure if it's eight or nine. That's eight or nine, not definite, to be determined. Yeah, I'm not quite sure. Yep, Sunday.
Great. Mr. President, I just want to clarify, you did say there's a cost for people who want to be on the boats, but the rest of the event from the land side is all free. So I just wanted, I know that, I just want to make sure that the public hears that it's open to the public. Thank you.
Are you soliciting?
Sure about the live fire?
Yes, no live fire.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Another time.
Okay, we're all set?
We're getting some great support from the city, and the police department's been terrific, and they're really enthusiastic, and they've gotten their bike crew's going to be out there and all. So I really, it's been a delight to work with the city, so really happy with that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for thinking of Gloucester and Stagefort Park when you, when this came up. This is quite a thing for us, and I'm sure it's also quite a thing for you guys to have this kind of a gem that we have, to have that to be able to be used for this.
It's definitely a great combo, so thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Next door to business, Madam Clerk.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Okay, Councilor Nolan.
An unexpired term, term to end 5/17/2028. Joe, if you just wanted to come up and tell us a little bit about yourself, that'd be awesome.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. My name's Joe Palizia. I've lived in Gloucester my whole life. It took me seven years to get into housing because of my past. I've turned my life around. I'm celebrating 10 years of recovery on June 13th. I think I'd be an asset to work with housing. It took me forever to get in. Since I've been there, I've helped numerous people in my building out, and I'm around the city. I'm a recovery coach. I do a lot for the alcoholic, for the addict community, and I think people deserve a chance to be in housing. If they're trying to do the right thing, I'd be honored to work with them and to help people in Gloucester, to give back to the community. I'm thrilled, so I'm looking forward to this.
Thank you, Joe. So that being said, on a motion by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Nolan, the ordinance administration committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council appoint Joseph Palizia to the Gloucester Housing Authority, term to end 5/17/2028, and I so move.
Second.
Motion to a May by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Grow, Grace. Discussion.
Councilor Worthley.
No, Councilor Nolan first. Joe, as I had said, I've known you a long time, through thick and thin, through sports and work. I've watched you at the worst, and I've watched you become the best. And housing is something that's very important, and we have a great committee on this. And to bring in your experience of how you had to fight your way in and find a way to do it, just to become an advocate, to help out people that need help, this is, this is the United States of America, and we have a lot of people with a lot of problems and a lot of help. And what we need to do is get them in and not let them forget their target. Recovery is the first step, and it's all important. Forgiveness is the largest step, and we have to learn as a community to forgive and understand who people are today, not how they got there, but how they got through. And I couldn't be more excited about supporting you for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Worthley.
Firstly, wow, Councilor Nolan, it was beautiful. I don't think I could add to that, but I'd like to just echo it. I'm proud of you. I've known you for 25 years, maybe. I'm proud of you. I think our whole community is proud of you, and I don't think you should have any shame for what you went through, and you're contributing and you're thriving, and I appreciate that you're giving back. So really, Councilor Nolan said it best. Thank you for your service. Good luck.
Thank you.
Councilor Grace.
Hi. I just wanted you to know that I think you're an absolute inspiration, and I am so grateful for your willing to put your passion and your compassion out there and to help the other people in the community, and I think you will be an inspiration to many, so thank you so very much.
Thank you. Joe, I'd too like to thank you, and what's particularly important here on your, for you to be on this board, is that you bring the real, true-life perspective of how people struggle to get through this, and that's so important, and it's been, sometimes it's a missing feature, where people haven't been through, you know, what you've been through to bring that perspective. And I really want to thank you for stepping up.
Councilor Nolan.
And I just want to add, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Councilor O'Hara, who isn't our councillor anymore, wouldn't be more proud right now for you, for all these advocates trying to get you where you needed to be. And I just wanted to let you know that he worked hard for you.
Yeah, he's a great guy. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those, the ayes have it, six to zero, three abs. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
We have for the zoning board of appeals, we have Lauren Innes Norton, fulfilling the unexpired term, term to end 2/15/2026. Lauren, you with us? There you are. Sorry about that. Maybe just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Excuse me?
Maybe just tell us a little bit about yourself?
My name's Lauren Norton. I have lived in Gloucester since 1967, on and off. Gloucester is my home. I have the fondest feelings for it, and I wanted to figure out a way how to give back to the city I love so much. I met a number of you on sort of the recent referendum that we had, and I was, had been approached some time ago about different ways of giving back, the zoning board of appeals being one of them, and having the experience I had working with many people in the city, going all over the city, I thought I can really make a contribution here with my legal background and my interest in zoning and development and so forth.
Excellent, thank you. With that being said, I'd like to read the motion. On a motion by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Nolan, the ordinance administration committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council appoint Lauren Norton to the zoning board of appeals, term to end 2/15/2026, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Grace. Discussion.
Councilor Nolan.
As we had said at O&amp;A, I'm happy with your expertise and knowledge of zoning, and not only that, just the community of what you can bring. And I also wanted to point out again that one of the biggest parts of the ZBA is to make sure that you're listening to the people and knowing that some of them may not know exactly what's coming up. They may not be prepared with an attorney, and just try to be as friendly and offering to them to help them get through what they're trying to do. It's a lot of laws. I almost want to say malarkey, but it's laws. And, but to some people, it's malarkey. They don't understand why we do things, but it's to protect people, and I think that you're going to do a fine job with that, and thank you.
Councilor Grow.
I want to thank you for stepping into this role. I think you're taking over from Catherine, who's been, was on the committee for about 10 years or so. ZBA has got to be one of the hardest boards in the city, because you're dealing with a set of rules that came in after the vast majority of Gloucester was already built out, and I think that causes a lot of angst and conflict with people. And of course, you know, your role is going to be to thread the balance between what was and what is, and what's in the best interest of any particular neighborhood, and I don't envy you, frankly, that challenge, but I do appreciate you stepping up for it, because it's very important to have thoughtful people who can see that balance and make decisions. Sometimes it's not going to go the way homeowners want or property owners want, but I, to know that they're considered and properly thought about in their process is really important, I think. Thank you.
I rescind mine, and I go with Jason's.
I do think it's important to have a practical eye on all of this and also be community-sensitive, so I've sat on one meeting just recently so far, and the team, the board, is terrific and thoughtful, and so I think I'm in good company.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to thank you for being willing to throw your hat in the ring. As Jason said, it's not going, it's not easy, and I thank you so very much for bringing your knowledge and your expertise and your willingness to serve in this capacity. It is appreciated. It is appreciated.
Councilor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you for volunteering. I've read your resume. I am very, very impressed. I think that you will be an expert on this before you know it. I wish you well. I look forward to working with you, and I just wish you all the best in terms of juggling that balancing act of neighbors and developers and building for, not for today alone, but for tomorrow as well, and trying to find that balance. Best of luck to you.
Councilor Memard.
I'm just going to chime, chime in, Lauren, thank you. Keep a positive attitude towards what your contribution to this effort and what, what my, what my fellow councillors all said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I too, Lauren, would like to thank you for stepping in on this. This is one of the boards that does an awful lot of work, and it's no small commitment, and it requires a, a good backbone and a thick skin, so welcome aboard. Well, not yet, we have to vote, but. Cannot be presumptive.
We don't want you to change your mind.
Okay, are we ready? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero, three absent. Thank you very much, Lauren.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Would anyone wish to remove any items off the consent agenda? Okay, we need to pull item number five off the consent agenda. Anybody else? Wait till Sean comes back?
Motion to approve the consent agenda except for number five.
Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley, and we'll wait a second for the, or unless there's discussion. It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda with number five being pulled. I'll explain it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero, three absent. All right, number five was pulled. It's the memorandum from the Chair of the Waterways Board to propose amendments to fees collected from the public and a vote. We need to vote to refer it to ONA and BNF because it's an ordinance amendment as well as involving money. And I make a motion, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Grow, seconded by Councilor Nolan. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero, three absent.
Sorry, were six the agenda? Would that apply to that as well? I know we just voted to refer that as is, but are the fees for permits in the ordinance book?
That's not in the ordinance. That's a permit fee structure. And we're trying to get them out of ordinances so we can streamline the process and, and not have to advertise, which is getting rather costly. Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
May 22, Budget and Finance Standing Committee report.
You're up. Councilor Memard.
There's a motion to accept the May 22, 2025 Budget and Finance Report as a consent agenda? Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Grow to accept this as a consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilor Nolan.
Aye.
Councilor Worthley.
Aye.
Councilor Grace.
Aye.
Councilor Gross.
Aye.
Councilor Grow.
Aye.
Councilor Memard.
Aye.
The vote is six in favor, zero opposed, three absent. The motion passes.
Councilor Nolan.
Can we ask that Scott read the name of the donors on the last part of that, just so they're recognized?
What I'll do is I'll just quickly step through each of the items so that there's a summary. The first was memorandum from the city clerk covering costs associated with police details for the election. The second was a memorandum from the CFO and SBT 2025 and the amount of $50,000 to cover a worker's compensation claim. The third was a memorandum from the CFO and a 2025 supplemental appropriation number 17 in the amount of $450,000 for critical repairs to the central fire station, including masonry work, garage floors, overhead doors, heating system work, kitchen repairs, and a generator. There was a lively discussion at the meeting about putting money into the old fire station versus the options for a new one, and this is the current best step under the circumstances. And then there was a memorandum from the Director of Elder Services, accepting donations in the amount of $655 from Ruth Bitwell, Barbara Black, Melvin Mason, and Marilyn Grant for a total of $655. And that would summarize all of our consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The May 19, the Ordinance and Administration Standing Committee report.
Councilor Nolan.
So we have a number one, we have CC number 202524, Gross, Grow, City Council adoption of MGL Chapter 90, Section 17C, the establishment of 25 miles per hour speed limit in thickly settled business district and city town for violation.
Okay, you made that motion.
Second.
And Councilor Grow seconded. We're going to hold for a minute. The motion's been made and seconded. Councilor Grace, okay, you all up to speed?
Very good.
Councilor Grow.
All right. Basically, this is one of the many enabling statutes that the state allows us to adopt, to incorporate state level, or local level changes of state law. State law governs speed limits, excuse me about this, sorry. State law governs speed limits in the city regardless of, of, of what the community is. So on thickly settled districts in every city and town in Massachusetts, the speed limit is set at 30 miles per hour. The enabling statute, oh, let me back up. We can, as a community, elect to ask the state to reduce that speed limit to whatever it is that we feel is appropriate for the community. We have to go through traffic studies, we have to, we have to petition the state, we have to have public hearing, and then we can, we can lower the speed limit to 25, 20, 15, whatever we want to do. The enabling statute, 17C, allows us to essentially make a broad sweeping change and, and make any, any thickly settled street that is currently 30 miles per hour, 25 miles per hour, without having to go through the state. So we, we do have to actually make the change on each, each individual state, but we've had recently state, some requests to have streets go from 30 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour. That all has to go through the state process. So this enabling statute allows us to do it locally, bring it down to 25, which is a good measure slower and probably, you know, certainly a lot safer than 30 in most, in most of these cases. And by adopting this enabling statute, it gives us that ability to act on our own volition as opposed to asking the state for permission. So it, it doesn't change anything at the moment, but it gives us the option to change things in the future.
Thank you, and we can do this as a blanket for the entire city for the unmarked roads. And, and I'll read the definition of what thickly settled or business district is. It's the territory contiguous to any way which is built up with structures devoted to business or territory continuous to any way where the dwelling houses are situated at such distances as will average less than 200 feet between them for a distance of a quarter of a mile or over. So, you know, let's look at Cherry Street if it didn't have any, that would be a thickly settled.
It's the most of Gloucester.
Yep, most of Gloucester. So it would reduce the, the speed limit that we've all heard, you know, people complain, you know, what's, what do you mean 30 miles an hour? It's like, so we'll bring it down five miles an hour, whether or not it'll make people slow down.
We do need to mark those streets or make an indication that it is 25 miles an hour.
And we need to, yes, I think on the entrance into the city too.
Yep.
Question of the motion. So for clarity, does this change the speed limit for places that's not already designated down to 25, or do we still need to initiate a step to do that, but we don't need to go to the state permission to do that?
No. Non-posted areas. Non-posted areas, so areas that have designated speed limits now will remain the same, and this just makes it so that on these thickly settled, settled or business areas, we do not have to go to the state. We have to notify them that we did this, but we do not have to go and ask them.
Process wise, we would still initiate, change, to reduce if we wanted to, and then tell the state after we had our hearing, after we voted for it, that it was done. Okay, that's helpful.
Yep, we can't, can't go any lower, and, you know, and if we go higher, I think we will probably have to notify the state too, if it's in a thickly settled or business area.
Last question for me. If there are places that are lower, you mentioned Cherry Street, I think the Kirby Hill in Cherry is five miles an hour.
Right, yeah, I mean, I was just using as an example, if it was unmarked.
It's marked, it stays where it is.
Stays the same.
Thank you.
Yes, no changes to any of the ones that are marked.
That hill will be tough at 25 miles an hour.
Yeah. Okay, any more questions?
Thank you.
All right. Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, read the motion, sorry. You did.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you, Jason seconded it.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero, three absent. Next up, is it still Councilor Nolan? It is.
CC 202528, Benson, City Council petition the state to lower the speed limit on Derby Street from 30 miles per hour to 15 miles per hour. Uh, 20, sorry, should be 20 works. Community recommended on a motion by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Nolan, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent to recommend the city council forward a letter to the Mass DOT requesting the special, the speed limit on Derby Street, a public way be reduced from 30 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour, and that such letter be accompanied by a speed study and a certificate of vote of the city council, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Grow.
Councilor Grace. Sorry. Amend that. Seconded by Councilor Grace, and Councilor Grace, I hear that you are representing Councilor Benson on this matter.
Sure am, thank you. Yeah, this was, you know, came about when the, the speed study, the sign that, that monitors how quickly people are going down that street, and it said 30 miles an hour, and there was a lot of unrest on Derby Street, saying, you know, 30 miles an hour, this little road is just too fast, which it absolutely is. 20 miles an hour is still going to be too fast, but it's an improvement. You know, it's a narrow road where if someone's coming one way, whoever's coming the other way has to stop and let them come down. When you're turning on that road from Washington Street, it's, you know, you, you say a little prayer before you, you do it because it can get a bit dicey. You know, I think that if we can petition and get this passed, it'll, you know, it, it will help to make that neighborhood safer for the families that live there, children that live there, and, you know, hopefully avoid something down the road that, that could happen.
Councilor Nolan.
I actually feel the same way that you did, and I read it in my motion that it should be. I'd like to make an amendment to ask that it is 15 miles an hour as opposed to 20. It's a same ask of the state, it's a small road, it's very tight, it's very populated, and it's very small. Even with the sidewalks that people park on, it's still, I think that if we're going to ask the state for relief, I wouldn't mind asking to make an amendment to change this to 15 miles an hour from 20. So with that being said, I'd like to make an amendment that would change it from.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Memard. Discussion. Councilor Worthley.
On the motion, first, and on the main motion too, thanks to Councilor Grace for moving this forward, and Councilor Benson as well, and Councilor Nolan for, sorry, for introducing amendment. I live in the area, and I avoid Derby Street because people drive too fast, and there isn't, like you said, there's not a lot of room. Sometimes people are parked on the side by the cemetery, and you got to sneak around them. I was shocked when I learned it was 30 miles an hour, but I'm also not surprised that people are driving that fast or faster. It's a very thickly settled district, and it is a lot of young families there and elderly people there too, so it's not safe. And I would say this on the main motion, but I might as well use the time now. And I, I know that we're all sort of hoping for some changes that improve the quality of life, and I want to encourage the mayor to ask the chief of police to enforce, because no matter what numbers on that sign, if we don't have some enforcement, and it doesn't need a lot, I think one day of people getting tickets, I think the people who are, who are violating this would know real quickly and would hopefully change their behavior, but without enforcement, anything we do is just words on a piece of paper and a number on a sign. But I'm very encouraged, and we'll support this amendment and the final motion as well. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Okay, vote on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero. Any more discussion on the main motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero, three absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
May 21, Planning and Development Standing Committee report.
That's you.
Me. The, the issue that we have before us tonight is a memorandum from the General Counsel requesting the approval of conservation, a conservation restriction to be held by Gloucester Conservation Commission for conservation and recreation purposes. Over 178 plus acres of land in Gloucester described as 200R Magnolia Avenue, Assessor's Map 197 Lot 5. You want me to read the motion and then give a little review of it?
Yes, please.
So on a motion of Council Gilman, seconded by Councilor Benson, the Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve a conservation restriction from the Essex County Green Belt Association, Inc., to the city of Gloucester for, for property of 178 plus or minus acres of land in Gloucester described as 200R Magnolia Avenue, Assessor's Map 197 Lot 5, for the purpose of the preservation of a natural resource of the city and being in the public interest pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 184, Section 32, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Grow, seconded by Councilor Nolan. Discussion.
On the, on the motion, so this is, we are at the final stage of, of process that started three years ago, maybe two, two to three years ago, where we are being asked to approve a conservation restriction. The city is actually not, has no responsibility other than to hold the restriction through the Conservation Commission. It's going to be run entirely by the Green Belt and, yeah, Essex County Green Belt Association. It's going to be preserved, it's going to be available for use by the public as, as trails and hiking and other kinds of land use that is appropriate for that kind of The, this is just the final step in approving it. The mayor has to approve it, the Conservation Commission approves it, we approve it, saying that we agree with, with the, in perpetuity restriction on the property, and that's where we are. And I believe Suzanne Egan is on.
Suzanne Egan is available. Remote, if anyone has any questions.
Councilor Nolan.
So this property is actually basically across the street from my home. It's in a neighborhood, and the, the part of this is because they're going to be building some duplexes in the neighborhood. It's a very friendly development, it's very nice, it's going to add homeownership, and it's going to be greatly accepted by the community. The, the caveat is to give this piece of property, the remaining pieces, back to conservation, which is wonderful. So we're going to get housing, and we're going to get some conservation land. And from what I can gather from my constituents in my neighborhood, this is 100% welcome. I haven't had anybody actually reach out and complain about it, and I think it's, it's good for Gloucester. I haven't had anybody actually reach out and complain about it, and I think it's, it's good for Gloucester, and it's also good for our housing stock. So, I, I definitely will support this.
Anyone else? Okay, you'll have the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it six to zero, three absent.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Right next.
Yeah, that's right, um. No, I'm not, that's it.
Floodplain?
Public hearing.
Hearing.
Oh, right. I missed that. All right, um, I am going to open public, public hearing number twenty-two-five dash zero-one-nine, RZ twenty-two-five dash zero-zero-three to amend GZO, Section five point five, Floodplain Overlay District, RE FEMA Required Amendments, and I so open. And anyone like to speak in favor?
Good evening, councilors, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
And I'm not sure if I'm a panelist, I think I might just be in the, uh, in the general, I didn't get a link this evening.
Want me to pull you in as a panelist?
If you could, I could share my screen and give a brief presentation. And I can keep this as brief as you would like it.
Still early.
Don't listen to him, just don't flood us with information.
Oh, ouch.
Motion to censure, Councilor Memmar.
Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, Greg Catamatory, Planning Director, um, I will just, um, quickly give a little bit of background of, of why we're here, um, on the National Flood Insurance Program, um, and some of their mapping products that they produce for every community that participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, um, where folks can get additional information. Um, we will also be having more information available on the city website when these maps go into effect, which is July eighth, and then the actual amendments, um, themselves. They are all required by the National Flood Insurance Program for the community to stay, um, in good standing and, and for, um, citizens that, uh, get that flood insurance, um, to continue to be eligible for flood insurance. Um, so very quickly, uh, National Flood Insurance Program, been around since nineteen sixty-eight. Um, took Congress quite some time to develop this program, um, as they pondered what to do after the Great Mississippi Flood of nineteen twenty-seven. Took them quite some time to figure out, um, how to finance and make available, uh, flood insurance to prevent, uh, future flood damage and also help folks that are hit by, um, natural disasters. So the program provides the flood insurance at a, a very reduced rate. Um, and then also for participating communities, we have to take steps to make sure that we're encouraging responsible floodplain management, uh, applying the Building Code and identifying those properties at risk, and making sure that they are building to the standards that have been, um, designed by, uh, FEMA that are incorporated into the state Building Code. They, uh, calculate that risk by, uh, performing what are called flood insurance studies, or FIS, um, and then they also kind of infuse that into the, the maps that, uh, many folks are familiar with, um, the flood insurance rate maps or FIRMs, um, which identify properties that are within those risk zones, and then, um, how serious of a risk that they're in, and that's what's used by insurance providers to, to write, uh, floodplain premiums. Um, participating communities are required to codify those maps and, and flood insurance studies. Um, we've done that, um, we recently went through a revamp in creating the Floodplain Overlay District a couple of years back. Um, and each time that they conduct these studies, uh, we have to make sure that our documents are current so that, um, everyone's on notice and we're all looking at the same resources when we apply these floodplain construction standards. Um, again, I noted that they periodically update these studies. The last time, uh, we had them in effect, uh, was twenty eighteen. Um, they do not do all areas at the same time, but did the, most of Essex County, um, in this last revision. And again, that's what we have to, uh, become current with in our, in our ordinance itself. Um, this is just a map of, uh, the area, Gloucester's on the far right. Um, the purple, uh, hues, if you can see them, are the, uh, individual panels that were updated through this flood insurance study. Um, the orange areas remain unchanged, um, so it, it was not the entire area. Most of the work that was done was on inland areas, so this doesn't impact, um, coastal areas, uh, to the, uh, extent. Um, it also incorporates any changes that were made to the maps over that period by folks, um, filing appeals. And if I zoom in a little bit closer, you can see Gloucester's divided up into a number of panels. Um, and in this zoom in, uh, it's the blue areas that have changed. So just looking, zeroing in on one of those panels, um, there is a website, uh, that folks can go to. Uh, you can, you can search, uh, FEMA Map Changer, um, and you can see the differences of what's occurred. In many areas, they actually reduced the size of the flood risk, so those areas that are denoted in purple actually have a reduced floodplain area associated with them, and then areas in this kind of lighter, um, yellow or beige, um, there were some areas that expanded. So there's a lot of, um, expansion and contraction, primarily based on the fact that they used a more updated, um, elevation data to develop, um, those floodplain areas. So to the changes themselves, again, these maps will go into effect July eighth, twenty twenty-five. Um, they went through their public process of review and made these maps final at, uh, the turn of the year, right around in December-January timeframe, and put communities on notice that these maps are coming forward. Um, so the first, Section five-five-three, we just have to make, uh, two changes to the reference to the most recent flood insurance study and the most recent mapping, uh, that will become effective. In Section five-five-twelve, there was one flood designation. We actually don't have it, but they would like us to list all the types of flood zones that, um, FEMA designates. Uh, we didn't designate a simple A-zone that doesn't have, uh, an elevation associated with it in that first paragraph. And then in five-five-fourteen, um, they wanted more specific reference to some of the roles that are, um, designated specifically in Massachusetts. The National Flood Insurance, uh, Program State Coordinator comes through the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, and the National Flood Insurance Program Specialist is the FEMA Emergency Management Agency Region One. Um, and again, those same references are in Section five-five, um, fifteen. So those are what's absolutely required by FEMA in order for it to, for us to stay, um, a, as a participating community, and also, then again, for folks to be eligible for flood insurance. We went one step further, um, Section five-five-seven has the specific standard, standards that we have enacted that are above and beyond, um, the FEMA requirements. And there's one instance, or two instances, I should say, um, where we have standards for residential construction in the AE zones, where we wanted to become a little bit more specific in, um, how we describe, how we calculate some of the limitations on new construction as well as, um, uh, alteration or expansion on existing property. I won't read the entire thing, it sounds complicated, it's actually not that complicated. Um, there's a little bit of a magic number, which is five relative to the North Atlantic vertical datum, which is about coincident with mean high tide. And basically what we're trying to say is, um, the percentage of alteration is really the floodplain area on the dry land portion of a property. Um, there are some instances where folks own, um, salt marshes and, and, and to low water or even over, over water, um, and we don't want that included in the calculation. It would, um, allow somebody to alter a property much more than, um, what would be perceived as ten percent. So these two references have basically negated anything that's seaward of, of high tide in any calculation of alteration. And I can give a little bit of a graphical example from another community. There are instances like this in Gloucester, um, this, this property in the orange. You can see this, uh, lime-green line that's kind of dividing this, this, uh, property in dry land, and then this property owns a fair amount of salt marsh. Again, that's about coincident with elevation five NAVD. This property would be allowed, under our current definition, to calculate ten percent alteration of the entire parcel, where they would only be then performing that alteration in, on the dry land. So what we've done is made a definition that would exclude those salt marsh areas, and that calculation would be based on just the dry land area. So that's a brief presentation.
You noticed that that was Beverly, that just because that was a very good example of a lot?
Uh, I'm familiar with the mapping with most of the, uh, North Shore. That's an area I know particularly, I live in Beverly, it was a good example. Um, I could certainly call up examples in Gloucester as well, if you'd like to see them.
Nope, that's fine. There is a, um, a typo in the, you know, or template. It says, uh, so in the second paragraph, it says add at the end of it, land, and I, and that says AE zone. I said, I think it's supposed to say of, uh, AE zone, land area.
Are you talking about in paragraph five point five point seven?
Five, 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 seven, A.
Of the land. Oh, I see, Greg, you, you have that handy, can you take a look?
I'm looking at the, uh, at our packet.
Yeah, no, I, I know, I'm just gonna ask him what it should say.
Um, I'm not seeing your motion, but I can put that language back up, just to make sure.
Oh, it is, it's in our packet.
The, the incorrect?
No, they're correct, it says shall not exceed ten percent of the land of the AE zone on a lot. So, um, yeah, it has blue and it just says land, and then it goes to AE. So I think, you know, down below in the exact same reference, it says land area.
I'll read it when I read the motion.
Yeah, that's all.
You ready? It's a lot of reading, so hang in there, um.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, we got, it's a public hearing.
Public hearing. Stop rushing. Confused enough. All right, anyone else like to speak in favor? Have anybody? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Do we have any communications?
We got, we got.
Up. Up. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening again, Joel Favazza, twenty-eight Middle Street. Um, my opposition is only that while you have this FEMA floodplain, uh, zoning ordinance reopened, it would be great if you would actually give the floodplain administrator a job. The section of the ordinance names the floodplain administrator as the conservation agent, and then gives that person no actual statutory authority or obligation. And so as a result, you have these kind of ad hoc forms that have been populated recently that don't match what the zoning ordinance says, and it's become very confusing for waterfront property owners to navigate. And so before you, um, seal the deal on amending this, seeing as you have until July, it sounds like it'd be great if you actually dialed in what the floodplain administrator did while you're at it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, um, do we have any communications?
There are no communications.
Questions from the councilors for staff. Councilor Bro.
Uh, Greg, if you could, um, could you, could you tell, address the, the issue that Joel brought up? It's not in this particular, uh, set of amendments, but is this something that we should be looking at following this process?
I, I think what's, you know, part of the issue is some of, or, or, th- there's two different jurisdictions. There's the, the FEMA floodplain, which is referenced in the Building Code. Um, it's also a conservation resource. Um, I know in particular, um, whether or not there are applications that, uh, that, um, Attorney Favazza has, has followed through on, um, with both zoning board, building inspector, and the Conservation, um, Agent and Commission. The sequence of, of how, you know, folks are navigating this, um, which is often an issue with a number of ways that land use permits are sought, um, the, the, the way, where to start and, and how to finish, um, has always been a little bit of an issue. Um, what we have been trying to do is make sure at this point, and, and he may be referencing, you know, some of that sequencing, we're trying to put on paper to make it, um, a little bit more linear, is the resource, resource area that the conservation is familiar with is called the, um, land subject to coastal storm flowage, which is the FEMA floodplain. That needs to be very clearly delineated and to, to a certain extent approved by the commission before any other land use activity can occur. Um, and I think there's been some instances when there's been relief sought from this ordinance because it does have some numerical standards associated with it, without having that confirmed. So some folks have been caught between Conservation Commission and zoning board, um, and we've, we've been trying to kind of resolve that. Uh, in a perfect world, you set a standard, and no one asks for relief from it, but, um, that's not been the case. Um, so we're trying to clarify some of that process, that the delineation of the resource or the floodplain is, is something that has to happen first and foremost. Um, and then if there's relief, relief sought from the ordinance, um, somebody can pursue that. So there's always an instance where, you know, a subdivision, a city council special permit.
Greg, we're getting a little further afield of, of what our public hearing is for.
I appreciate that.
So, it, it sounds like you're, you're talking, you guys are.
Yeah, I, I, we are definitely trying to clarify the process.
And this can definitely, doesn't need to be discussed here this time.
Okay, well, I, I, I appreciate, as always, the incredible breadth of knowledge you bring to these discussions, so thank you.
Please do.
To close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
I just wanna get to the damn motion. Any other questions?
We already did questions, you, oh, did you?
I didn't, I just wanna make sure. I didn't have any other questions. Okay, all right, there we go. Uh, now I've lost my place, there we go. On a motion of Council Gilman, seconded by Council Benson, Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council, to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester zoning ordinance in Section five, Special Regulation, Section five point five, Floodplain Overlay District, Sections five point five point three, five point five point seven, five point five point twelve, five point five point fourteen, and five point five point fifteen as follows. Um, five point five point three, federal flood, floodplain district. The federal floodplain district includes all special flood hazard areas designated on the city's flood insurance rate map, firm, the FIRM, issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA, with the administration of the National Flood Insurance Program dated and add July eighth, two thousand twenty-five, deleting July nineteenth, two thousand eighteen. These maps indicate the one percent chance regulatory floodplain. The exact boundaries of the district shall be defined by the one percent chance-based flood elevations shown on the Essex County Firm and further de- defined by the Essex County Flood Insurance Study, FIS, report dated and add July eighth, two thousand twenty-five, deleting July nineteenth, two thousand eighteen. The effective firm and FIS report are incorporated herein by reference and are on file with the city clerk, planning board, building official, and Conservation Commission. Under five point five point seven use regulations, for the purposes of this Section five point five point seven, residential dwelling structure or const- or construction shall mean any accessory dwelling unit, a single-family detached dwelling, a two-family dwelling, or a multi-family or apartment dwelling, except those standards shall not apply to mixed uses. The following shall be prohibited in VE zones, VE being velocity zones. A, new construction of a residential dwelling. B, movement, alteration, or expansion of an existing residential dwelling or structure. Repair of a substantially damaged structure or reconstruction of an existing structure so as to increase its lot coverage in the VE zone. The following shall apply in the AE zone. A, new residential and/or accessory construction shall conform to underlying zoning requirements, except that increased lot air coverage within the AE zone and add, on a lot in aggregate, shall not exceed ten percent of the add land of the AE zone. Add, in this calculation, lands below elevation five feet relative to the North Atlantic vertical datum, the NAVD, shall be excluded. the NAVD, shall be excluded. And B, in the case of the movement, alteration, or expansion of an existing residential and/or accessory structure, such activities shall not cause the increased lot coverage of all structures within the AE zone to exceed 10% of the and add land area of the AE zone. Add, in this calculation, lands below elevation five feet relative to the NAVD shall be excluded. Under 5.5.12 recreational vehicles in and then add the capital letter A, comma, A1-30 AH AE zones, V130 VE and V zones, all recreational, all recreational vehicles, to be placed on a site must be elevated and anchored in accordance with the zones regulations for foundation and elevation requirements, or be on the site for less than 180 consecutive days, or be fully licensed and highway-ready. Under 5.5.14 water course alterations. In a riverine situation, the conservation agent shall notify the following of any alteration or relocation of a water course, adjacent communities, especially upstream, upstream and downstream, bordering states if affected, NFIP state coordinator and add Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, NFIP program specialist and add Federal Emergency Management Agency Region One. Under 5.5.15 requirement to submit new technical data. If the city acquires data that changes the base flood elevation in the FEMA-mapped special flood hazard areas, the city will use its best efforts within six months to notify FEMA these changes by submitting the technical or scientific data that supports the changes. Notification shall be submitted to the NFIP state coordinator, adding Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, and the NFIP program specialist adding FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency Region One. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Worthley.
There's my.
Discussion.
If I could.
Yep.
I, I mean, there's really nothing for us to do in here except to either pass it or not pass it. If we don't pass it, we eliminate the ability for members of the community to participate in the flood insurance program. So this is really just about keeping federal regulations current with their local regulations, and we should be supporting it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. I would like to thank Joel Favazza for reminding us that there's more work that needs to be done. And, and this is a program that we could not possibly live without. And it doesn't just necessarily cover saltwater. It also covers freshwater. So if you see the interior spaces, it's like, oh, that's so far away from the ocean. Well, it'd be a low-lying land that gets inundated and flooded out with, with storm water. So anyway, it's a roll, call, vote. Oh, no, I have to. We close the public hearing. So call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gross.
Yes.
Counselor Grow.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, zero opposed, three absent. The motion passes.
Thank you. Got to keep going. This went for a couple of pages. Okay. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing 2020, 25, number 20, Council Order 2025, number 19. Benson, amend GCO Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-274, two-hour parking between certain hours, subsection A, regarding the Fort Square Playground Parking.
Like to open the public hearing? And Counselor Grace, are you also speaking in the voice of Counsel Benson?
I have the voice of Dylan, if I may. Yeah, so this kind of came about during, initially during a ward meeting that we held down in the fort, you know, talking about parking down there. As we all know, parking is a huge problem in the fort area, which has been made worse in recent years due to a lot of employees at a larger business down there. This particular parking lot that's by the playground has been inundated with people that are parking for eight, 10, 12-hour shifts. And it is not allowing for what it was intended, which is for families, children, to be able to use this playground that the city has spent a lot of money on updating and making, you know, a lovely area for people to play. But, you know, if a family's coming with a bunch of children and, you know, carrying a bunch of stuff in tow and they can't find a place to park, then they will not be able to use this beautiful playground that we put so much effort into fixing. And, you know, that's basically it. It's to help the, the area, you know, so that this, this is not used by businesses for long-term parking, but used what it was intended to be for, which is for families. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone would like to speak in opposition? You have up to 15 minutes. You are represented. Otherwise, it's three. Seeing none, do we have any communications, Madam Clerk?
We do not.
Do we have any questions from the councilors? Counselor, what's your name, Worthley?
Thank you. I'll be supporting these. I just have two quick questions, or one quick question. I see essentially two different changes being proposed with the same council order or same motion. I just wanted to clarify why wouldn't, we wouldn't take these separately? Or if we can take them at the same time? It's just, it's, I don't want to confuse the public. And frankly, it's a little confusing to me because they're two very distinct areas. One is to add Pleasant Street.
No, that's already there, I believe.
It's just to bring the language, so it's all.
That, that's already in the ordinance.
Okay. I got it.
Yep.
Sorry. It's confusing, but.
No, the blue is, the blue is what is new.
That's what we're adding. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else, questions? Still seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And so we have the committee report. Microphone, Counselor Nolan. We're going to have to give you one to clip to.
We should all have one. So we have to keep a motion.
Yeah, it's true.
No whispering to each other. On a motion by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Nolan, the ordinance and registration committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent. To record, the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinance as chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-274, two-hour parking between certain hours. Subsection A, be amended as follows. Upon the following streets, add playground parking lots or add designated parts therefore and when signs are in place, given notice thereof, it shall be unlawful for any person to park a vehicle for a period of time longer than two hours at any one time between the hours at 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, in accordance with section 22160. Pleasant Street, Western Side, intersection of Cedar Street, Shepherd Streets, which is just part of the ordinance, add the parking lot located at 25 Fort Square adjacent to the Gemma Laro Shimataro Playground. And I so move.
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Grace. Discussion. Yes, Counsel Worthley.
I was just going to defer to Counselor Grace, but I think she kind of did that to the hearing. Yeah, I just want to commend Counsel Benson and Grace for doing the work of ward councilors, which is not always easy. This is a change that I think everybody in the neighborhood is going to be appreciative, or they are appreciative of, and takes time. I don't know if this goes in effect in time for a Fiesta, but I think it's 30 days from the time we vote on it. But hopefully, there can be some enforcement on this once this is finally on the books, and I appreciate the work you've done.
Very good. I too was caught a little bit about that Pleasant Street, Western Side, and then I was like, oh, right, okay. When I was reading it earlier, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Counselor Nolan.
I did make a note where I said therefore instead of thereof, after designated parts. So this should be there, not there for.
Got it. Okay. All right. Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it six to zero, three absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing 2025, number 23, special counsel permit, number 2025, number four, Prospect Street, number 14, map 25, lot 77, for a change of use to convert a commercial use into a seven-unit residential use, section 2.3.18, and special permits for lesser lot area and open space for dwelling, section, GZO, section 3.2.2 footnote A in the R5 district.
And I need to open the public hearing and continue to January 24th. June. Continue to January, no, to June 24th.
We haven't even had summary yet.
I know. Well, I was trying to push it to the next, I was trying to push it to the next council. So continued to June 24, 2025. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing 25, number seven, RZ 2025, number one, to amend GZO Chapter Three Dimensional Regulations by adding a new section 3.1.9, change of use without exterior changes.
I'll open the public hearing. And speaking in favor, Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. Before I start, do I have 10 minutes or 15 minutes?
15.
Great, I think I can do it less than that. Yeah, it'll all be timed either way. Okay, so I had the great honor of serving with Abdullah Khambadi, who looks over our shoulder with the excellent service award. And I can't impersonate him, but his, he would always say, "The standing committees do the legwork of the council." And my hope, and my hope when I introduce this, is that there'd be some robust dialogue at the committee level. I do appreciate Counsel Grow allowing me to speak at the committee level. But I was hoping that we could have some more dialogue and maybe create something that is really positive. I had the honor of serving on the Planning and Development Committee for four years in my first tour 20 years ago. And with Counselor Khambadi and I, we introduced a council order to create the Zoning Ordinance Review Task Force. It was a subcommittee of Planning and Development Committee, and we met every Wednesday, every other Wednesday morning from 7:30 to 9:00 AM. And we had some attorneys. Michelle Harrison was one of them. Catherine Slicky was one of them. There were zoning board members, a planning board member, some builders. And we had three goals. The first one was to make the zoning ordinance a little less complicated. We also learned real quickly how hard that process was to do. The second goal was to make it so that you didn't need an attorney necessarily for some simple changes, to make it a little more accessible for the public to participate and to afford to do that, and also to remove what we considered some barriers to affordable housing, things that made it more expensive to do business in Gloucester. Over the course of a couple of years, we introduced a number of changes. Some of them were small, some were impactful. Most of them were approved. It was a very slow, thoughtful process. I introduced this council order three or four months ago, and I went to the first meeting the planning board had. One of the comments was maybe we should wait until the comprehensive planning initiative is done. And as robust as that is, there's no scenario where the comprehensive planning initiative is going to dive into a zoning change that is very specific to dimensional requirements. I think they're looking at vision and bigger issues than just specific language in the zoning code, and certainly not this one. The, the planning board asked the zoning board for their input on this. And I would like to read into the record, it's already in the minutes of the zoning board, but I don't know if it's in our packet. But I'd like to just quickly introduce that into the record. Just a second to pull that up. I had it here. So I'm reading it directly from the minutes, but it was emailed to me from Joe Parisi, the chairperson of the zoning board. At the zoning board approval meeting of April 24, 2025, the board held discussion related to the proposed changes to section 3.1.9, change of use without exterior changes. The consensus of the board unanimously was that the intent of the changes might be good in certain circumstances, such as one-to-two family and two-to-three family. However, the wording, quote, "to any other use allowed by special permit, by variance, et cetera," would and/or could create, sorry, would and/or could create uses that the public deserves them being reviewed. This is somewhat due to the, due to their allowable uses, that being within setbacks becomes problematic for the residents. On behalf of the Gloucesters EBA, that was Chairman Joseph Parisi III. That was sent to the planning board. The planning board had their subsequent meeting, which I didn't, I had surgery that day, so not only was I not available, but I didn't know what was happening. I should have known, but I wasn't, it wasn't on my radar. And at that meeting, in the minutes, it says that Attorney Egan presented that the proposed change is in conflict with 40A, section six of Mass General Law. And as a result, the planning board voted zero in favor, six opposed. It then went to the Planning and Development Committee, and the committee, as you will hear, voted zero to three. And the main, and I'm not going to summarize that, Counsel Grow, so I can do that, but the main thing was that they weren't comfortable with either, A, the planning board voting against it, and the city attorney stating that it was inconsistent with section 40, section six. I'm sure you can add to that if necessary. What I'd like to do, though, is spend a minute saying essentially what the goal of this is. And it seems to me that from every testimony I've heard, that the goal is a good one, and how we get there might be complicated. The goal, and as written, is that if you have a pre-existing non-conforming structure, meaning, like Counsel Grow said earlier, most of the buildings in Gloucester have been built before the zoning code came into place in 1969, the current zoning code. And if you have a building, and the easiest one is to think about its height. If you have a building that was built at 42 feet in 1890, and you want to go from a one-family to a two-family, that the neighborhood would still be invited to speak for or against, and the debate would still be on the change of use, the one-to-two family, or one-to-three, or two-to-three. But that you wouldn't need to apply for a height exception because you're over the 40 feet in some districts, 35 in others, that you are not being asked for additional relief because you're not changing the exterior structure. There would be no additional overshadowing. There'd be no additional view blocking if the building is not changing. If you recall, the Soy Free Library came before us for a height exception, even though they were going down 18 inches. Certainly wasn't a change of use, but we had to take up a vote on the height exception for a building that was coming down. What that does is, A, it gives neighbors something to fight about that isn't actually, I can't imagine a scenario where we would have voted against the library's height exception. I can't imagine a scenario if we were voting on a one-to-two family conversion, if they're not changing the height, that we would deny it or ask them to make the building shorter to comply. This does not take away any rights on compliance with a change of use. But I do appreciate the zoning board's point, and I spoke with Joe Parisi, that if there were a change, and his example was a machine shop, if the dimensional requirement is 10 feet from a neighbor's yard and the building is nine feet, that there might be a scenario where there's, in addition to the change of use, you might want to say the neighbors could appeal it on basis of the dimensional requirements. I respect that and was hopeful that there'd be some discussion about what about this could we work with? Was there a way, if it was inconsistent with 40A, section six, that we could make some amendments to it to make it comply with that? And then lastly, we received two emails that will not be counted for being on the record, but I'd like to use my time to just simply read those. One is from Bob Gillis.
Oh, I don't know about that.
I can use my testimony time to testify and read something.
I'm not sure if that goes into the record. I'm asking.
If you're asking me, I'm reading something that was sent to us.
Yeah, no, that's, I'm asking, you know, the councilors how they.
Would be, but.
Just want to, don't set precedence, that's all.
I think if we were reading it from the clerk's perspective, within that 48-hour window, that would be a violation of our procedure. But for me to read an email that we all received, I'm not going to misquote it, it's all, it will be in the record, whether it's today or in the future, it's been received. This one is from Bob Gillis, 43 Revere Street. It's the Gloucester City Council. First, thank you all for your service to the city. Counsel Worthley called me last night to make me aware of testimony you're taking on a proposed zoning change brought forward by Counsel Worthley. He asked if I would consider commenting on it. He asked if I would consider commenting on it, and after reviewing it with him, agreed to do so. It seems to make sense that the council consider it tonight or refer it back to PND. The proposed zoning change appears to be a clear, common-sense solution. If an applicant is not making any changes to the exterior of a building that was built prior to the zoning code, why would a zoning require approval for a legally non-conforming structure that is not changing? When members of the public see a notice for variances, is reasonable for them to think that a substantial change may take place when no change at all will happen? Of course, if a change is, change of use is proposed by the applicant, this proposed zoning change would apply. This appears to be a simple solution that will streamline the process and reduce unnecessary expenses. Thank you for your consideration. Robert Gillis, forty-three Revere Street." The other email that we received was from Ruth Pino. I'm not sure if each of you have seen it yet. It came in, um, uh, hang on a second, came in a few hours ago. And for some reason, it's not... One second. A few seconds ago. City councilors, this is again Ruth Pino. She uses her two twenty-four Washington Street address for a business. At least she's on seventy, I forget the number, eighty-four, seventy-four Wheeler Street, but that's not listed here. "City councilors, I know you have a zoning ordinance amendment before you tonight. I also know that has been sent to PND and Planning Board earlier this year, and both have rejected it. While the language of the ordinance amendment may not be what it should be or has to be, it's an important way in how to look at adding units to the housing stock. I hope that you will refer it back to PND with a request that PND, that PND refer it back to a working group of planning and development and Planning Board to rewrite the amendment to meet necessary guidelines and requirements. The sentiment of the ordinance is to remove impediments to the allowance of existing or new units in non-conforming structures, is a very good one. If a building has been on the ground for fifty, eighty, a hundred or more years, the owner should not be penalized with the hoops of the current requirements to get relief for building height and setbacks, when in fact, the applicant has no intention of making changes to the exterior. My purpose in writing to you, writing you, sorry, my purpose in writing you is to give support to the sentiment of the order, but understanding the language of such an ordinance needs more work. My request is that you agree to giving it more attention and work rather than dismissing it." Ruth Pino, Bmax Beacon, two twenty-four Washington Street. My hope is that we keep the hearing open and also refer it back to PND. If we have to close the hearing and send it PND, then we have to run into the concept, if there are changes made, then do we re-advertise it as such? I'd like to engage the Planning Development Committee on an effort, maybe to include ad hoc group to see if this is worth pursuing, because in many cases, the zoning board does approve the changes that, I'm sorry, the non-changes, the requirements for height and setback and front yard and rear yard, there's no changes to the structure. And what that means is that the public is sometimes feeling like there's a lot of things that are changing when they're not. It takes away from the good work the zoning board does when they are thoughtful about the things that are changing, and the feeling that, oh, they're just a rubber stamp on some things like height and setback that isn't actually changing. So, I'm hopeful that the standing committee would be willing to take this up, or the committee would be willing to send it back to the standing committee for that robust dialogue with an air not to, well, it's illegal, so we shouldn't do it, or no, the Planning Board voted against it, it's how can we make this work in a way that is meaningful and effective, so that if someone wants to come and change from a one-family to a two-family, so we can age in place, or have something affordable for the younger generation, all the things that we've been hearing and talking about, that we're not making the impediment be, I've got to go against my neighbors, I've got to get a public hearing, I need to go, some people are anxious about speaking in public, there could be reasons for appeals. And if we're not changing the structure, and I don't think that we should be asking people for, asking for people to get relief for changing a structure that they're not changing. So, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. I hope you consider Ms. Pino and Ms. Gillis's comments to ask us to work on this further. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, the goal is, if you're not changing the structure, to not ask people to be required to get use variances based on the dimensional table. That's it for me.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor? You want to bring Joel in?
Good evening, the last time I pro...
Three minutes.
Joel Favaza, twenty-eighth Middle Street. Um, so I applaud the effort here. I want to start by reminding the council that if you vote this down rather than send it back, because the Planning Board did not give a favorable recommendation, it's barred for two years from coming back, and this is such an important change, that I really urge you to avoid, um, you know, hitting it with that stain. So I'll give you two examples where this ordinance would have come into play that I think the councilors are familiar with, because they're pretty recent. I have a whole stack of these, and I should also make clear that this ordinance change only hurts permitting attorneys like myself, because it basically cuts in half the fee we have to charge when someone wants to do one of these projects. So, one fifty-one Main Street, it was, uh, two commercial units, they wanted to add four residential units. Under the current zoning, we'd get six variances, front yard setback, side yard setback twice, lot width, lot area, and percentage of vegetative cover. Then we had to go to the council and get four special permits, lot area for dwelling in it, reduction of open space, height, and the multi-family use permit. And so the proposal that's in front of you just wipes out that ZBA step, right? We still have to go to the council, because you can't just add four units of housing by right anywhere in the city. You're still going to the council, but because that building and that lot were as close to the lot lines as they've always been, and were only going up, the only dimensional relief would have been the height, because that was the only new non-conformity. Another good example was over on twenty-nine Addison Street. Twenty-nine Addison Street had two principal buildings on one lot. One had five units in it, one had two units in it. We were trying to add a third unit to the two-unit building. Under the current zoning, we had to get seven variances, lot area, two different front yard setbacks, two different side yard setbacks, percentage of vegetative cover, and distance between buildings. Again, zero exterior changes, like not even a dormer on this. We still do the zoning board, my client has spent thousands of dollars in six to eight weeks of his time, and then we had to go to the council afterward to get four special permits. Under the proposal, that zoning step goes away, we still go to the council, because again, you can't add units to these houses without getting a use permit. And even to Mr. Parisi's example, the machine shop, machine shops are not allowed by right in a residential district. So even if you had a house that was five feet off the property line, you want to put a machine shop in there, no, you don't need variances anymore, but you still need a use permit, you're still applying one point eight point three. So these protections are still there for the neighbors. It's not to let people run roughshod over their neighborhood, it's just to say, hey, we're not going to make you spend twice the money, go through twice the boards, and take twice the time if you're not actually making the building that's been there forever any different dimensionally. Or if you are making it different dimensionally, we're only going to analyze the change in the dimensions, not whether or not it's still too close to the front, because it's been too close to the front property line for a hundred and fifty years.
Twenty seconds, Joel.
I'm all done. Please send it back to PND, please, please work on this some more, it's a good idea. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in opposition? We have communications.
There were no communications received within the time period.
I'm sorry, I got a call from the mayor before this meeting, and he said that Catherine Schlichty was going to be representing his position on this with a request to send it back to PND. And I don't see if she's on, I don't know if she had planned to, um, speak, and I don't want to speak and overshare what the mayor told me, but I just want to make sure in case she shifted to watching TV or something that she knows.
She is.
Okay, I didn't mean to share that, just except that she was planning to speak that she didn't have...
She hasn't. Catherine Schlichty, are you on?
I am, Mr. President. I'm actually here as an observer. I, but my understanding that you had asked for an opinion from Suzanne, so I thought she was going to speak, but...
She's here, so...
Because the mayor is, uh, well, I'll let Suzanne speak, actually, I think she's...
Actually, this is a legislative matter anyway, not an executive matter.
Yeah, exactly.
Hey, thank you for giving that opportunity.
Thank you.
Um, communications.
No communications received within the deadline.
Thank you. Questions from councilors? Council Grow?
Uh, if I could, I'd like to have, uh, Council Egan, Suzanne.
Uh, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Uh, could you, uh, for the council, give a summation of your concerns and the, uh, issues that you felt this potential, uh, change in the zoning ordinance reared up its, you know, in, in the discussion?
Yes, absolutely. So, my concern with this zoning ordinance is that it's very broad. So it's been discussed tonight in terms of how it will help with, um, adding housing to the housing stock and ease, housing and ease, um, changing the use of pre-existing non-conforming structures that were built before the zoning ordinance was in effect. In fact, this zoning ordinance is, takes us such a broad brush. It applies to any change of use, it applies to any structure, whether or not it's been, was, um, built under a variance, under a special permit, or whether it was a pre-existing non-conforming, um, structure, which has some, um, protections with under forty A, section six, but there's also some ways that also requires changes, substantial changes of use and structural changes for that purpose to comply with existing zoning ordinances. So I can understand at this point, it sounds like maybe this ordinance was put forward under a very, very broad brush, and now there's an, um, an interest in taking a look at it and, and pinpointing sort of why, the purpose of the ordinance and redrafting it to, um, to actually further housing and deal with pre-existing non-conforming structures. And I think that can be done through an ordinance, but this particular thing, um, amendment before the council tonight does not do that.
No, that's fine. I, I, obviously, you, you gave forward your opinion to the council as well that we've all received. Can I ask Greg Catamatory to speak his concerns, uh, on, on the amendment as it's, as it's been presented?
Good evening again, Greg Catamatory, Planning Director. I won't go through a, a summary of, of the Planning Board activity. I think Council Worthley did a pretty good job of that. I think some of those initial concerns, um, that, that maybe were expressed through the zoning board as well, were that it's really dealing with any change of use. And I understand that, uh, Attorney Favaza points out that residential districts don't really allow for much in the way of commercial uses neighborhood business districts do. And again, so it's that, there's, there's a lot of different variation out there when you can kind of consider existing structures and, and what use they might, uh, change to, as well as uses within the, the commercial and industrial districts. It's just kind of a question of, is there relevance for setbacks? Um, I think that's, that's kind of what, what the, um, Planning Board conclusion was before, um, the additional input from the solicitor. I will say, um, again, nobody was saying that this isn't a challenge, this isn't an issue, and maybe in many instances, shouldn't necessarily be a concern. And I think based on what Attorney Favaza had, um, mentioned in terms of the relief, I think some of the issue is the base zoning. Several years back, uh, different faces of, of councilors, uh, I think I attended about fifteen meetings on some zoning proposals that were addressing some of these issues. And many of them did not survive the public hearing process, but we recognize that, um, we have gone through several sweeps of very broad zoning changes, down zoning, most of the residential districts making a lot of non-conformity. It was referenced a lot during the last eighteen months of a zoning effort we're all familiar that will not be named. And I think, on the, on the, on the other hand, there was also really a desire for more information and more data around what those changes might actually realize. I will say, um, there is a Planning Board Housing Subcommittee, um, that has started meeting again, um, as we're tailing off of, um, the development of the comprehensive plan. I think there are actually a number of things that are very specific and actionable. One of the things that will be occurring probably in the next three months is a lot of data development. One of the things, uh, that has come up a number of times is, how many lots do we have that don't comply with their zoning designation, um, whether it's just on size or frontage or those types of things? We do have information on structures themselves as well, and, um, just really start looking at, you know, how, how big is the problem? And I think, um, I certainly also don't want to close any doors by necessarily a negative vote. I can't suggest that anybody's going to offer to withdraw something either. But I will say that I think, um, the approach that I'm, I'm hearing and the desire from the Planning Board is to develop that data set, um, to really understand how big the issue is, to involve the zoning board, and I've, I've, I kind of tried, I'm trying to empower everybody that has the ability to propose a zoning change. This is a board that has a lot of longstanding members that have seen certain types of variants and special permit requests every other Thursday night for, some of them maybe almost a couple of decades. And, um, their feedback on what becomes a really relevant, um, dimensional requirement and what is not something that they see very often, um, they can be, also be the initiators of zoning amendments. So, um, timelines are always the most difficult thing to, to nail down, but I, I can tell you that, um, we will probably have, um, a more developed data set, um, by July in terms of what we have in every zoning district, in terms of non-conformity, to the level of understanding that we have, um, from GIS data on buildings, where they sit on lots. And then we should really take a hard look at our zoning tables and what dimensions we're applying, and, and how they affect the number of lots and structures in those districts. That would probably, um, give people some certainty in terms of, of what a change might mean. I think at a minimum, even if there was the ability to, um, propose an amendment, uh, like, like the one that's been drafted, um, you'd kind of want to know how many circumstances would this, um, come into play? And I think we'll have a little bit more information on that. So, it's a long-winded way of saying, yes, I think this is a good idea. We tried to look at some of these things, uh, a few years back. There was a lot of, a lot of public response negatively about looking at these things, but I think we have to recognize that we went from five thousand to ten thousand to twenty thousand to thirty and forty, and even eighty thousand, um, in a, in a very quick span between the eighties into the two thousands. That impacted basically every single property in one way or another in terms of, of how they may or may not comply with our zoning ordinance. And there, there is the ability, you know, with, with some more data to really wrap our arms around it a little bit, uh, better, um, and maybe look at, at some of the base requirements, um, rather than kind of a, you know, this is a, you know, I mean, it's, it's fairly broad and, and trying to understand exactly how it would be applicable, you'd have to start, you know, playing out case by case, uh, when this would go into effect.
Those questions were of me, the questions of the city staff. Is that fair?
I guess, yeah, of the proponent or city staff, yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Greg Catamatory, for sharing that. If the council decided that we wanted to work on this further, either through your office or the Planning Board, would you be able to provide that data in a few months? And maybe some support to understand the implications of this, and maybe also narrow its scope? Is that something you'd be able to, or be willing to help us with?
Absolutely. I think, you know, that's, that's something that, um, the, the Subcommittee is in the midst right now of kind of trying to define the different things that they're working on. And, and some of the effort is, is, is looking specifically at the activity of the zoning board over, over a longer time period, um, to see the types of requests that they're getting, what they've been giving relief for, and looking at that, um, on a, on a spatial basis as well, like what, which districts are the ones? I'm pretty sure that we'll probably figure out that it's, you know, R five, R, R ten and R twenty that went through a lot of change in ninety-nine. We already have some language, um, in the zoning ordinance specifically for the Washington Street corridor, where they actually utilize the setbacks of their prior district. So there, I think there are maybe a number of different ways that we can potentially tackle this. I'm not sure that it's, that it's specifically just one paragraph in, in section, um, three one nine. Height has its own section. I think that's another area that, um, if there's agreement, um, that's, that's an area that we should, um, be looking at. We have had a lot of discussion about height, it's a very, very touchy subject. But I think, again, with some of that information on the height of all the structures, you know, a good estimate of all the height of the structures that we have right now, to give people a sense of what we're... give people a sense of what we're, what you, what you're seeing when you're driving down the street in, in a lot of these different neighborhoods, it, it's a lot more than 30 feet and that's what our limitation is right now. It's a very difficult discussion. It'll probably be the, the fifth time it's come up for a potential zoning change in the last 25 years. But again, I think that's some of those things, I think we need to do a better job of presenting information as accurately as we can and as comprehensively as we can to start making some of these changes.
Thank you, Greg. So you would be available and willing to help if it does get sent back to Planning Development?
I, I'm not sure that that's the place where it should go. Just because it's something that, you know, the Planning Board would take an effort on, I would say that, I know if there's, you know, interest in participating in that, that Subcommittee, those meetings are noticed and we can certainly, if somebody wants to get involved in, in that, that might be the, the best approach. Because if it's ultimately not going to be in that format of 319, it, I don't know that you're really, you're really gaining much by extending that out for a long period of time.
Right. The extension would potentially be to, we've got the ball rolling on this and to see if we can incorporate those potentially. And then my last question is to Attorney Egan, if I may, Council President Gross. Attorney Egan, are you still on the call?
Yes, I am. Yep.
Thank you. Appreciated your feedback we received, I think it might have been Friday on this. Clearly, the intention is a good one, I think, or at least my intention is a good one, and it's been recommended by a couple of people that the spirit of it is good and it needs more review. Would you be willing and able to help us narrow the scope so that it wouldn't be in conflict, potentially in conflict with 40A Section 6?
Absolutely. And I think that, you know, echoing what Greg had said is that since the Planning Department and the Planning Board, they're the planners of the city and they're the ones who do that research and are the subject matter experts of looking at how we deal with structures that are non-compliant right now and also how we target what type of uses we want to foster and that, that the effort should start there, that would be my opinion, the effort starts there, you get our facts in line, and then when we have all our facts in order, then we start crafting an ordinance. Then we get to the legal aspect of it and craft a ordinance to deal with that issue.
As far as the ordinance is before us today, if the data shows that this makes sense, would you be able to help us with this one so that it does comply with 40A? Or at least willing to?
I, I'd be willing to, to look at it. As it's written right now, I think that would be a challenge.
So the only question for the council is if I make a motion to Senate Committee, would we keep the?
I have, I-
I'm sorry.
We're still in discussion.
Sorry.
Right, we're, we're in questions. So Councilor Favaza, I think erroneously said that it would have, it would take us two years for that to be, if it was voted down. And that's not required as long as the Planning Board recommends it to us. Is that correct?
Yes, and, yes, and also I think that there's an, the issue is, is whether or not it's the same ordinance comes back to the City Council, the same zoning ordinance goes to Planning Board, Planning Board makes a determination and a recommendation to put forward the ordinance before them. And if, as it's been discussed tonight, the intent and the purpose of a zoning ordinance is to specifically target some issue, then that would presumably be a very different ordinance than what is before you tonight. And it would have the Planning Board recommendation. So I don't think you'd have to be concerned about that two-year time bar without, that, that does occur without a Planning Board recommendation.
Want to make sure. And just another question is on, would that two-year prohibition also apply to a motion that is withdrawn without prejudice?
No, motion, no, that only applies when there's a-
Up or down?
Yeah, when there's a no vote, yep.
Okay. Hey, you'll have more questions later, but thank you. I just wanted to get those two things out there.
Can I ask a follow-up question relative to that, just for clarification on that subject?
Go ahead.
Attorney Egan, is that, if this were withdrawn without prejudice, does that negative vote from the Planning Board supersede or still impact the ability to bring a similar ordinance forward? Because I thought it wasn't just the vote of the council, but the vote of the Planning Board that changes that.
No, it's this, it's the legislative authority. So if the legislative, so if, if this, so I'm sorry, if you're asking me whether or not this ordinance, as it's posed to the City Council, is withdrawn today, whether or not the same exact ordinance could go to Planning Board for a recommendation and come back to council within a two-year period? That I, that I would say is probably not. But I, but if this is withdrawn, it's gone to, goes to Planning Board and a new ordinance is crafted that specifically deals with the issue of housing, it sounds like that's the issue you want to deal with, and also deals with pre-existing non-conforming structures, that's more targeted and it's a Planning Board recommendation, then there's no concern about a two-year time bar.
One last follow-up on that, just so I can understand this. So the zoning code, and I think this agrees with you, but I want to be sure, no proposed amendment to this ordinance which has been unfavorably acted upon by the City Council shall be considered again by the City Council for a period of two years from the date of such unfavorable action unless the adoption of such proposed amendment had been, past tense, recommended by the Planning Board pursuant to Section 1.11.5A. So I appreciate that you're saying that they could vote in favor of a new proposed amendment, but the repetitive petition section, 1-11, 1 dot, 1.11.6, unless the adoption of such proposed amendment had been, past tense, recommended by the Planning Board. So I just want to make sure that that-
I think what, what, the exact same motion, the exact same amendment would have to, is that one that has a two-year prohibition on it. Anything new would not have any prohibition on it because it is a recrafted and yes, would have to go through the entire process. So where Joel said, no, that's wrong, it's yes, you can if it's recrafted.
If it's recrafted, if it was the same one, regardless of how we acted, the Planning Board voted against it.
It'd have the same number on it, but it would have different wording in it, which is-
Exactly. So-
Which has been communicated by the two boards that have previously reviewed it, that it needs.
Understood. So what are the options at this point, if I can ask that question before we get to discussion? It has nothing to do with the public hearing, we can talk about that during discussion. Well, unless we want to continue the public hearing, then we would close it. What's, what's the purpose of withdrawing it if, if what we're really going to be talking about is crafting an entirely new ordinance? I mean, it, we've gone into trouble, we've had everybody review it, it's, it's come back with negative reviews from both the ZBA and from the Planning Board, not particularly favorable reviews from our legal department. It seems to me that the simplest thing to do is to have a vote on this.
I think that's up to the prerogative of-
I understand. I'm making my point that, well, okay, I suppose that, that what, instead of having an, an ordinance-
We're going to close the public hearing, we'll have that discussion then. Thank you. Well, we're not going to close it, I mean, immediately, but we'll have, that'll be part of the discussion. Our parliamentarian says that it should happen after the close of the public hearing.
We'll shut the motion.
If there's going to be, if you're entertaining any withdrawal.
Yes.
Okay. So what do we have? Questions? Any more questions? I think that the city planner and city attorney should probably be available for questions during discussion. If everybody's okay with that.
Wouldn't questions be, oh, additional questions?
Yeah, during discussion, yes. Clarifica, clarifications, we'll call them. All right, I am going to close the public hearing. And we will have the committee report.
All right.
On a motion by Councilor Gilman, seconded by Councilor Benson, Planning and Development voted zero in favor, three opposed, to recommend the City Council to recommend, recommend the City Council amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance Chapter 3 Dimensional Regulations by adding a new section 3.1.9 as follows. 3.1.9, changes of use without exterior changes. This section 3.1.9 shall apply to structures that are A, pre-existing non-conforming structure; B, legally existing pursuant to a valid variance or special permit; or C, legally conforming to the dimensional regulations for its present use. A change of use of such a structure to any other use allowed by special permit, by variance or by right without exterior changes to the structure shall not require, require compliance with the dimensional regulations of Section 3.2. Additionally, an exterior change of such structure in connection with such change of use that I, reduces the non-conformity of an existing structure without expanding the footprint thereof, or two, reduces the footprint of an existing structure shall be allowed. For any other exterior change of such a structure in connection with such change of use, the otherwise applicable dimensional requirements of Section 3.2 shall apply only to the areas being changed, but not to the entire structure. Nothing in this Section 3.1.9 shall serve as an exception to any other requirements of this ordinance, including but not limited to the parking requirements in Section 4.1 and the use tables in 2.3, and I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Gross, seconded by Councilor Nolan. Discussion.
Yeah. So again, I'm going to get back to what I started to say back then. I think that whatever the intention is behind this ordinance, it's an ordinance that, that is backing into a, a, an approval process as opposed to being developed out of a, a need for changes that are then reviewed and structured by the, by the various boards that are designed to, to address these issues. As opposed to some of the things that, that Councilworthley may have evolved in the past with Councilor Kimbati, this was not part of a zoning ordinance review panel, it wasn't part of a process, it was, it was delivered whole cloth to the Planning Development and Subcommittee and the Planning Board. And as such, not neither, even, even if they felt there might be merit to some aspects of the, the ordinance itself, the ZBA, nor the Planning Board, nor PND, and I think based on some of the, the opinions that we got from, from our legal department, felt that as written and as structured and as defined was something that, that we could, we could pass and actually be understood. It's, it is very vague in its, in its construction. And I think if, if the council had instead wanted to come forward with an idea of a, of a change to the zoning amendments, and this is a fairly significant one, would do so through a process of getting review and information through the normal process, which is engaging the Planning Board, engaging the Planning Director, engaging our legal department. And none of that happened. So I think what we've got here is we've got this kind of, this messy agglomeration of potential things that have lots of, of, of unknowns attached to them. And we're being asked to, to sort of either pass or reject it tonight, or play around with it till it makes sense. And I'm not sure that's the most useful way to engage any of our professional staff or our, our Planning Board especially, that I would rather have a, a set of ideas that, that would be put forward and asked the Planning Board and ZBA if necessary to come up with their concepts and their ideas. They didn't feel frankly, at this point, that there was anything for them to do with this other than send it back with essentially a negative recommendation because they weren't interested in moving forward on it as it stood. And I think we need to give some weight to that. That's, that's not an insignificant amount of, of, there's a lot of folks on, on this, on the Planning Board that want to make changes to make things, you know, easier for development of, of certain kinds of things. I don't really, I see a lot of potential downsides to this. There's, there are situations that I think that are on the horizon that take the, the neighborhood out of the, the equation. I would point out that we, we tried to do a, a zoning change a few years ago where we would allow the two-family by right conversion within the building envelope of a completely entirely compliant lot. And we had counselors who stated that they were opposed to it because it took the neighborhood out of the process. And now we're, now we're looking at a, an ordinance that is taking the neighborhood and the people who are directly impacted out of the process. Plus, one last thing, and I'm, I'll stop talking. We just got through a year and a half long process with the 3A of talking to people and explaining to people that we were going to respect the boundaries of the ZBA, of the zoning setbacks and requirements for multifamily use, and that any project that had a variance that needed to be made would have to come before the ZBA because we respected the neighborhood and we wanted to make sure that we weren't negatively impacting people in, in taking away their rights for, for, for commentary and for input on places where our setbacks and our height requirements and, and just doesn't include parking, but all these things come into effect. And now we're putting forward something saying, we're going to allow this without your input at all, in a lot of different situations that have nothing to do with 3A, pretty much anywhere in the city. And I think we need to be really careful with that.
I'm going to let other counselors who haven't spoken yet.
Haven't spoken on the motion.
Right, but you've spoken, I want to let, give, yeah. Councilor Grace.
I mean, I think that there is merit here, but I don't think a one-size-fits-all is the way to go. You know, it's, there's some general consensus that it should go back for further review and some tweaking and fine tuning. And I would, I would, you know, if withdrawing it is the easiest way to go, to get that to go forward, to have a discussion, to find, do the fine tuning, you know, I don't know. But as it stands right now, I think a one-size-fits-all, we would pigeonhole ourselves and we would lose a lot of trust in, from constituents. And I don't think, and I think we need to be really careful, as Jason alluded to, particularly with what has been transpiring over the past year and a half, which has been very heated at times. And I think that we need to be very careful not to, to go down any path that, that could reignite those flames. Thank you.
Councilor Nolan.
This has been very interesting from the start, and I believe that Councilor Grow has made a lot of good points, and I've been following this. I, I take in total respect the Planning Board's decision, the ZBA is very important, it's a bit of a new pointy tonight. In a city like Gloucester, I think that every individual unit has the right to be heard for the rights of their neighbors. And to take away something that could change the status of how the building's used, the amount of people going into it, I, I don't, that's fair. And I think that if the Planning Board has voted against this and Planning and Development has voted against this, then I too shall vote against this.
Councilor Maiman.
Again, I agree with my other counselors that the intent here is, 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 is good. However, it's not an appropriate process that's been brought forward that includes the necessary bodies that really have expertise on this. And I am struck that, it seems like only yesterday, that three of us voted to support existing conversion to two-family by right. And we were, we were solidly voted down because there was this concern that that would fail to provide neighborhood notification and engagement in the process. And it seemed like a small ask, but that was clearly opposed at the time, unfortunately, in my, in my view. So I can't see any way to support this under the circumstances.
Councilor Worthley. Thank you. So without being named, there were some references to votes I've taken and decisions I've made. I'd just like to address those for a moment. I appreciate Councilor Grow saying that the process shouldn't be to involve the city planner, to involve the legal department, to involve the boards and commissions, and quote, "None of that happened." We are not allowed to contact those people without permission from the mayor, as you know. Submitting an ordinance change is a responsibility of the council. There are other organizations that can do that too. If you have a better ordinance, I welcome you to submit it. But those things did happen in a different way, in that the people who benefit, no, the people who use those boards and commissions the most, the people who appear before those, including Attorney Eliason, who said she supports the intent and thinks this needs to be vetted a little more, recommended we vet this more. Attorney Favaza, Attorney Frantero, all of them have added input. And yes, you could argue they're on one side, but they're the ones who write before these boards more than any others. To the point about, just recently, two, three years ago, we voted against the change of use to two-family by right. That is the opposite. So you can say that, but it is the opposite of what this is. This is saying if you change the use, you still need to have the permit hearing on the change of use. It involves the neighborhood, where no one's cutting the neighborhood out. We're simply, I am simply saying that to oppose it because- We're simply, I am simply saying that to oppose it because of the height stays the same, to oppose it because of the dimensional requirement, the dimension to the distance of the side yard, the front yard changes, that is very different than cutting the neighborhood out on something by right. We're saying if you have a structure that's not changing, you don't need permission to, you don't need relief to change it. What I would like to do at this point, though, I'm not naive to count votes and see how this is going. Initially, I was hoping to send this back to PND for further review. I don't sense that that would pass. I'd be willing to put that motion forward for a discussion point, or to withdraw without prejudice so that if there is a zoning change that is similar to this in nature, that is very close to the same, that we don't run into the issue of the two-year timeframe. If it turns out that the ordinance is very different, then that negates it.
I'd like to take my time.
Yeah, take your time.
So I watched the zoning board meeting, read the planning board decision, read the Legals' decision or opinion, but the zoning board of appeals is the one, because this affects them more than anything, is the one that stood out for me. And in it, they claim that they, you know, that they have concerns, that it's overly broad. They said, you know, some could be helpful, but it's overly broad, it's convoluted, while it's well-meaning. They said in that meeting that, in fact, it's not going to save people money. So it also, you know, they also made reference to who crafted this ordinance and, you know, said that they have, that there was an agenda being driven there. Now, I also spoke with some zoning board members. They say that there is merit. We've heard from Legal tonight, there is merit at exploring this. We've heard from Planning tonight, there's merit at exploring this. But this would just have way too many consequences that would be negative in the tight neighborhoods we have. A change of use, it was my old neighborhood where our buildings were literally 10 feet apart, you know, that, forget the setback, they were 10 feet apart. They had to go before zoning board of appeals to add, to go from, you know, three to four family and change the first floor to four, to two apartments. Now that added, you know, double the amount of people that would be there 10 feet away. Now, I would not be able to go to the zoning board of appeals and ask for orders or conditions because they're 10 feet away from my house. Forget the setback, but 10 feet away from my window to their window. And I don't think that that's fair for the people who live next door to not be able to go and say, can we get some accommodation, which they do quite often at the zoning board of appeals, to take that away from the people, I think is a disservice. And while this idea has merit to streamline, it needs to be narrowly focused, it needs to be very well-defined, and it would just relate to very specific situations and circumstances. So I just, you know, like I said, I paid attention, and I did not, I did not witness on the zoning board of appeals, an overwhelming endorsement while they said it was, on paper, it may be a good idea, but this is not the instrument to do it. And I had that both in conversations and what I got off reading. The.
Thank you. I can make one last comment on this, and then I'll make a motion. It's all right.
Counselor Grow had his finger up.
I'm fine with him making a statement. I guess I would say that I don't see, I don't see much point in withdrawing this, frankly.
Let him, if he's going to make that motion, you can have that discussion then.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
We don't know if he's going.
Right. So, for better or worse, in terms of opinion from this council, I have championed neighborhood rights, and I don't think that what I propose here takes those away. In your example, Counselor Gross, I certainly understand that there would be, and should be, the right to oppose or ask for order conditions relative to the change of use. This would simply be about not change, if the change, if the structure's not changing, we wouldn't be asking them to change the structure. But I hear the point nonetheless, that it would be one extra place that the neighbors could potentially oppose us and get consideration for. So that I respect. And so I would love for us to work on this further, but I don't feel like there's a lot of sentiment here to send it back to committee. So in the event that there is a change that's very similar to this, I like to make a motion to withdraw without prejudice in the event that something that comes forward that's close to this could still get the support of the planning board and this council. So, and I make that motion.
I think you just, you can't condition the withdrawal with that something similar from the planning board.
So if that happened, that we would not be in that scenario, that's why. I'm sorry, I was testifying, but why I'd make the motion. So let me just make the motion, and make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you.
Do I need a second? And do we?
Yes. Do we need a second? Yes, we do. Motion made by Counselor Worthley, seconded by Counselor Grace. Counselor Worthley, you made the motion.
On the motion, so in the event that something comes forward from these various groups that we have heard are going to be working on some things, if something came forward that was very similar to this, I wouldn't want it to be prejudiced with a vote against it from the council, nor do I want just the tone to be negative from the council towards those groups that might be working on these kinds of things. So that, whether it's legal or not, we also want to say, we don't want to be shunning them from something that's similar. This has had robust support in concept, but very much opposition in detail. So I'd like to at least stick to the concept of the support and not have us be voting against it to deter people from working on this. So, or something like this. So I'd like to respectfully ask that the council allow this to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Counselor Grow.
As I was going to say, I, first off, I don't agree that there's been robust support for the concept of this. I think that there is some potential merit somewhere in here that there may be places where this works to change things. I think this is an ordinance that was put in, you know, with the expectation that we would, we would accept it and move it forward, but never, never once was it, was there any effort to put buy-in from the various organizations and our commissions or people that are involved in the process actually creating ordinances. It was done outside of the normal ordinance crafting process, didn't involve our legal department, our planning department, or any of our boards or commissions. I don't think that it's, it's an issue if we should be worried about whether or not we're not going to be able to address this in two years. As has been stated, if the planning board comes forward with a recommendation on a new ordinance that, that addresses some of these points in a way that is more clear and defines what we're actually trying to do, we can do that, we can take it up, and we can, we can argue it and vote on it. I just see this as not a well-done ordinance, and I don't think that.
Motion's to withdraw, so.
As I understand, so I'm suggesting that we simply vote it down and move on to the next stage, which would be to engage the planning board.
Okay, we're going to have the vote on the motion.
And that's, my motion, my argument is to not vote to withdraw.
Thank you. All right, any more discussion on the motion to withdraw?
Last thing, if I may. I don't think we've ever denied a motion to withdraw from any counselor, and if any counselor wants to initiate a zoning change, we can. You certainly do have access to my phone, but I'd be happy to give it to you if you'd like to see that I have had conversations with some stakeholders that helped to create this and the sentiment, and then as it got put into writing, more specifically, there's been opposition to it because it's too broad. Those same people have said they'd be happy to work with me on this again if we were to move something forward.
Let's keep it within the.
So I'd like to respectfully ask the motion.
Keep it within the municipal realm.
Sure.
All right, any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor to withdraw? Aye. Oh.
Aye.
Motion fails. Three to three.
It was the first time that I didn't say no on the yes vote. Do you want to redo the vote?
No.
Okay.
Do we need to redo the vote? Failed.
So the counselors don't want to allow this to be withdrawn without prejudice?
That's what we just heard.
Okay.
Failed, three to three. Myself, Marjorie, and Counselor Worthley.
So now we have to vote on the overall motion?
Correct. And that's a roll call vote.
Counselor Nolan.
Oh.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
No.
Counselor Gross.
No.
Counselor Grow.
No.
Counselor Memmard.
No.
The vote is one in favor, five opposed, three absent, the motion fails.
Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing 2025 number eight, RZ 2025 number two, amend GZO by adding a new section 5-21 demolition delay.
All right, Counselor Grow, right? This come out of PND?
Nope, there was no, this is a, there was a, oh yeah, there was a motion to withdraw, sorry. But I don't have, yeah, there we are, I'm sorry, my apologies.
That's motion.
Yep, move to withdraw, city council order 2025-014, Worthley amend GZO by adding new section 5-21 demolition delay without prejudice, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion.
I will, I will, on this one, I will respectfully allow this, I agree with withdrawing this because this was inappropriately put before planning and development. It's not a zoning ordinance change, it's a code of ordinance change, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be before us in the first place. So if Counselor Worthley wants to withdraw it, he can then put it forward and ask it be sent to O&amp;A.
Motion's been made. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes opposed, ayes have it, six to zero, three absent. And we have nothing for council vote? Is that correct? And then we have individual counselors' discussions and reports by, we have any reports? All right, council's request to the mayor, Counselor Nolan.
I don't have a request to the mayor, I just want to give a thanks out to the Waterways Board and the Harbor Masters Office for getting everything they needed to get done from Memorial Day, open and up and running. The Department of Public Works really worked hard on city-owned cemeteries, parks, and beaches to make sure that everything came through for the public. I'd like to point out that the private cemeteries have a bit of work to do. Some of the parishes are very upset with some things going on that you guys aren't taking care of, but the city cemeteries are looking very well at this time. And I want to thank also all the generous gardeners and also the Betty and Bob Cannon for getting the Magnolia Cemetery up and running, and the volunteers from the Veterans Center with all the flags. Thank you all.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. I would like to echo Counselor Nolan on the work that DBW has done, as well as the Harbor Masters Office, and specifically the Veterans Affairs Office, V. Chippini, and the work that they did for what I would say would be the, one of the, probably the most beautiful Memorial Day ceremonies I've ever witnessed in the last 30 years. Job well done, and lots of volunteers, whether it be putting flags up in the cemeteries, both private and public, or the volunteers that worked to bring the two events, one at the high school and one at the Vietnam Memorial to Life. It really was fantastic, and I want to thank them also, including my son Jude. He's now played taps for four years in a row, and I'm very proud of him. Last Thursday night, we bore witness, I bore witness to the preservation awards that was given up by the Historical Commission, and that was also a beautiful event. People have really stepped up to preserve their properties, to preserve some things that are worth preserving in the city, and I think the Historical Commission should be commended for organizing such a beautiful event. And the people, the individuals that they recognized, I just want to continue to recognize them, their hard work. That's it for me, and I want to fiasco, I think. We have, oh, we have a couple meetings before then, sorry, that's not, sorry. Budget here, it's, sorry.
Counselor Grace.
Yeah, thank you. So this week marks our second go-round with the street sweeping in much of the downtown area, and it also is our second go-round of enforcement not happening. We have many residents who have taken the time to find alternative parking as was requested, and signage has been put up so that the streets couldn't be swept. And we have equally as many residents who have ignored the ordinance. It has not been enforced. It is completely unfair to the people who do the right thing to not have the streets swept, to have gone through the effort of finding another place to park. A lot of these people are elderly, it is not easy for them. There's no consequences for the people that don't follow the ordinance. So I respectfully request, again, I got, you know, a scathing email from somebody that had some pretty nasty things to say about the city council and various other things because of ordinances not being enforced. It takes us time, it takes effort, it takes money for us to do this, and if they are not enforced, it is a colossal waste of everybody's time. In the case of street sweeping, you know, Mike Hale's crew, they work on a skeleton crew with a, you know, a nonexistent budget, and these people are at the ready to do their job, and they cannot do their job if the cars are not moved. So I, again, respectfully request that we are diligent about enforcing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Grow.
And I don't want to follow that. Just a couple things. The first one is that on Thursday, May 29th, at 5:00 PM, Gloucester City will be raising the pride flag for the month of June. It won't be up for the month of June, but it is in recognition of Pride Month and for all of our LGBTQAI neighbors, friends, family members, and their allies, please recognize the importance of this particular event, especially these changing times that we are facing. So that, again, is May 29th, it's Thursday, 5:00 PM at City Hall. And secondly, I'd like to wish my wife a happy birthday. We all know she's a lovely person, and she's far more than I deserve, but happy birthday.
I think that's an unanimous approval of that statement.
I agree.
Counselor Memmard. I would just also like to announce that June 6th at 11:00 AM, there'll be Wear Orange Day, which is Gun Violence Awareness Day for all the families and victims of any kind of gun violence. Fifty-eight percent of gun violence in this country is suicide. Fifty-eight percent. So I think June 6th, you know, orange flag raised and some speechifying, and we will try to just keep the awareness going because that's what's needed.
What time is that event?
Eleven.
Eleven o'clock.
Counselor Memmard.
I'm sorry, I just have one follow-up to mention that, I believe it's June 14th coming up, that the Chamber of Commerce is recognizing Joe Shalino as the small business person of Gloucester. There'll be a reception starting at 5:00 to Tuesday at Oak to Ember, and you're all very, very, very much invited to recognize Joe for his contributions to the community over his long tenure as a city councillor, as at the Building Center, and as proprietor of the Weather Vane, amongst other things.
Just for clarification, it's Tuesday, June 10th, for Joe Shalino's reception. It is the 10th, yeah.
And there'll be a citation at the clerk's office for everyone to sign. You'll get a notification.
Mr. President, can I add one other thing?
Sure.
Appreciate Counselor Grow's announcement of the pride flag raising. I don't think I've missed one of those, and I have surgery on Thursday, and I don't want my absence to interpret it as any lack of support. I hope you'll make it, so. It's an important one.
I didn't miss Wear Orange Day last year. Because I was wearing red. Okay, motion to adjourn. Motion made by Counselor Worthley, seconded by Counselor Grow. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, ayes have it, six to zero.